181 Board of Education. Two corners. We will begin with all the.
Here. Michelle Breckin.
Here.
Here.
Randy Hyden.
Here.
Sarah Spear.
Here.
John Ward.
John.
Oh, I have my mic muted, sorry. Now you can hear us.
John Ward.
Roll call, John?
Here.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Thank you, Kelly. Now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to recollect for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We will move along then. We'll move along to the next order, which is the approval of Nate's agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve. And I'll second.
We have a motion from Director Spear with a second from Director Breckin to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, all, I'm sorry, we have to do all votes for everything in there. John, come back home soon.
Kevin Goeth.
Yes.
Michelle Breckin.
Yes.
EJ Donnelian.
Yes.
Randy Hyden.
Yes.
Sarah Spear.
Yes.
John Ward.
Yes.
Very good, okay. Motion carries. All right, well, we'll go up with next, we have recognitions, I believe both Dr. Stelmonk and Principal. Come on. None of us quite look the same dressed as earthlings.
All right. So, son. Okay. Well, I am here to recognize and give congratulations to Baxter Elementary School, Students of the Trimester for Trimester Two. Trimester Two, our focus was on growing stronger. The following students were chosen for their increased efforts in deepening their thinking, increasing their stamina, building their skills, and building strong relationships. Each certified staff member can choose one student each trimester. Kindergarten. Leah Anderson, Aubrey Kramer, Carson Gatz, Ryse Peterson, Everett LeBlanc, Xavier Nelson, Connor Maduna, Gracie Thielen. First grade. Kalia Vang, Fallon Shepherd, Madison Slypey, Gage Bible Breckshaw, Braxton Quarter, Miles Barth, Soren Gundalich. Second grade. Olive Bear, Sophia Chapman, Lily Clayton, Ellie Evans, Travis Austin, Grayson Moore, Ansel Berwick, Jamie Fairchild, and Quentin Flowers. Third grade. Madeline Hillsken, Joey Anderson, Cameron Morris, Alexis Dennison, Riker Christopherson, Kaylee Stangy, and Subia Hoffman. And finally, from fourth grade. Olivia Queerin, Ellison Shepherd, Ryder Diamond, Jack Navin, Paige Solisker, Isabella Anderson, Anell Hadiya, Hayden Gardner, and Millie Nicky. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Stelmonk.
Good evening. In January, we focused on the character trait of fairness, and so last month, our award winners were Lillian Walton, Lincoln Hall, Amelia Walter, Nora Perrington, Emmett Rosie, Maddox Nickborn, Landon Lee, Superior Buckman, Isla Wilson, Bernadette Lamuska, Sabina Gish, Nico Rodvent, Emma Wood, Levi Paulson, Claire Nicholson, Bentley DeForre, Alex Hernandez, Henrik Mulberg, Ava Moby, Joshua Chandler, Kenna Anderson, Abby Peterson, Amelia Sandbig, and Kyle Schweitz. I also wanted to honor someone who will be moving on, and so I wish to extend my appreciation to Oren, affectionately known as OJ Stefan within the Nisswa community. As our esteemed head day engineer, he will see his resignation notice. It would be remiss of me not to highlight this remarkable individual and offer my heartfelt congratulations on his new role as Director of Buildings and Grounds at Pine River Back as Public Schools. It's critical and crucial to acknowledge that OJ's dedication and expertise has extended my expectations and all of ours. Together, we encountered numerous challenges, such as managing building projects, navigating through a pandemic, and even spontaneous rooftop dancing. Along with my, with the day-to-day issues that OJ seamlessly handles without attitude, but with gratitude and joy. Sorry. Despite his heavy workload, OJ always remains approachful and attentive to the needs of others. His commitment to the wellbeing of our school community has been evident in every action he takes. He constantly has gone above and beyond, never seeking recognition, but so deserving of it. That's why I'm speaking in front of you, even though I hate doing this. What truly distinguishes OJ has been his selflessness and boundless generosity. Not only has he diligently cared for our school's infrastructure, but he also extended his expertise and assistance beyond our campus. For example, he's gone out to our staff's homes to cut up trees so they could get to work. He's added oil to our staff's cars if they didn't know how. He's consulted me on my many fever dam issues at my home. And is the person we go to when things are amiss and we need an engineer's brain to solve it. His involvement as volunteer firefighter, participation in community projects, and willingness to support staff members during personal crises exemplify his remarkable character and dedication to serving others. OJ's unwavering dedication, selflessness, and ability to inspire will be greatly missed. While I said I typically avoid speaking in front of the board for this reason, the people in Nisswa are more than just colleagues, they're family, and OJ embodies that sentiment. I could not simply read his name and know that he would not leave without sharing what he has meant to all of us. It has been an honor to work alongside OJ, and I am grateful that our paths crossed. He will now work in the community he lives in and be able to go to school with his children. We will miss you, OJ. You are always a warrior. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Han for a moment.
Okay, so you may or may not realize that February is School Board Appreciation Month, so we're going to take a brief moment in our recognitions to honor and thank our school board. So at their tables, they have a lovely coffee mug from our Brain of Public Schools Foundation and a T-shirt for some Warrior pride. But probably what's going to make everybody else that's here tonight jealous, although I do want to let you know that Mr. Freeman has extras, so you can all arm wrestle for those. But we asked Andrew Freeman and some of his culinary arts students to recognize you with a Warrior, I don't know, did you name it, Andrew?
Warrior Moose Cake.
Warrior Moose Cake. And Mr. Freeman, if you could introduce the students with you tonight.
This is Blake and Lydia. They are both members of the Kitchen Warriors Cooking Club on the River Side Schools campus. They're either present or recognized. I think they're remembered.
Wonderful. So I had the honor to be out at Grandview, where you guys did the North Stars.
The North Stars of the Future.
Thank you.
Fundraiser event for Pro Start program to send a winning team to nationals. That's going to be in Maryland this year. So it's just a way of raising funds so that way a team that wins doesn't have to worry about hotel or airfare or transportation, any of their cooking equipment or anything.
So you want to explain what Pro Start North is?
So Pro Start is a curriculum that we use in culinary. It teaches kids real-life experience. It's co-led by the National Restaurant Association, so it has industry things in it, and it gives kids industry opportunity. And then Pro Start, through the state of Minnesota, they help grants for classrooms so that way you can buy equipment for your classroom to bring in real-world experiences for your kids.
So you're looking at the future maybe chefs, or when you think of our area and all of our resorts, so this is creating our future for our community, so. And thank you, and thank you for recognizing our school board. And for Mr. Ward, you'll have to hear from the board, so I think of the 100-plus people tonight, hopefully, oh, your daughter's giving, she would like your dessert. But I think Mr. Freeman and his students waited 12 desserts?
I brought 15.
Oh, so there you go.
I have to be dropplin'.
There you go. So for the rest of you, you can figure out how you're going to navigate that. You might be tackled in the hallway.
Are we going to motion for a recess while we eat these?
You're an olive.
Rats, okay. On we go.
It looks like public input, so I'll turn it back to you.
Great, all right. So next up, we have public input. So a member of the public can address the board during this time. Comments will be limited to three minutes. Complaints or allegations against students or employees may not be discussed due to data privacy. Complaints or allegations must be submitted in writing to Superintendent Dr. Han. The Board of Education Superintendent will not converse with guests to address the topics discussed at this time. So first up, we have, is it Nicole Petrich? Hopefully I said that right.
Yeah. Good evening, members of the board and Dr. Han. My name is Nicole Petrich, and I am a student or my special education teacher at Riverside Elementary School. I have worked for ISD 181 for 10 years. I am here tonight to share some information about our staff and how important it is to settle our contract. Today, it has been 227 days of working without a contract. As in other buildings, the staff members at Riverside are crucial to the support and success of our student or school community. Everyone from the cooks to the janitors, nurse, secretary, librarian, educational assistants, and certified staff are dedicated, patient, and doing the best they can each and every day to ensure the students at Riverside know they are cared for. We are in this profession to do what's best for our students and help impact our community in a positive way. Our staff are tasked with more now than ever before. With staff shortages, more academic responsibilities, and growing behaviors, it is harder and harder to accomplish our goals and meet the needs of our students each day. We have amazing staff that no matter, no matter what, go above and beyond and rally around each other when anyone is in need. However, when those needs are daily occurrence, they wear you down physically and emotionally. We can only hold each other up for so long before we fall ourselves. I strongly believe we are at a tipping point in our district. Our staff, students, and our community need us to be united. We need to think about how the added staff demands are affecting our overall ability to do our jobs effectively. We have a lot of changes coming down the pike from the state level that will have a huge impact on our district. There are several decisions that need to be made and work that needs to be done. In order for all of those work groups to move forward, our contract needs to be settled. There are multiple things being put on hold until our teacher contract is settled. With the best interest of everyone, we hope we can come to an agreement very soon. Over the past few months, our staff have reached out to board members to come and visit Riverside. None of those invitations to our knowledge have seemed to work with your schedules. I am here to offer another blanketed invitation to all of you to come and spend time in our building and get to know our staff and students. Thank you for your time, and we look forward to seeing you at Riverside.
Thank you. Doug Curran, please. Get one of the cakes, Doug.
Yeah, Doug Curran. I have heard that there's a lot of changes coming down the pipes from the state. The teaching standards, some of the teaching standards that they have are going to be in question, whether it's social society standards, the mass standards, or any of the other ones. I was really kind of disheartened by a special educator that was here and kind of picking on a 34-years-old, pointing out one of the director's disabilities. When disabilities come in all shapes and sizes, all kinds of forms, and, you know, to be picking at somebody's disability just because they're a little older than the students, that just shouldn't be. You know, the same, sometimes I have people in this, in this group here that would consider me being disabled because I'm a Christian conservative who doesn't want pornography in the schools. They would look at that as a disability, being a Christian conservative. But when a disability, sometimes you don't notice it, but sometimes it's there. And I think just about every person in here has a disability if they thought about it. But when one's obvious, you know, you may think somebody's winking at you, they're not winking at you, it's a disability. So just wanted to clarify that, and just wanted to say thank you for serving, and it's nice to see the crowd here. That's really a good crowd.
Anna Wulu.
Hello, my name is Anna Wulu, and I am speaking on behalf of 11 of my district colleagues in the school readiness program, which provides preschool services at both the Warrior Early Learning Center and Nisswa Elementary. In total, they teach 23 classes for students who are 3 to 5 years old. We are all aware of the critical role early childhood learning has in laying a foundation for future academic success and social success. 90% of a child's brain is developed by the age of five. With the constantly changing standards and increased learning expectations for our youngest learners, the skills learned by children prior to kindergarten are the same skills that most of us in this room learned in kindergarten and first grade. Pre-K is tasked with preparing these students for the academic environment that kindergarten, by necessity, has become, both through important social learning as well as meeting a wide array of academic standards put forth by the state of Minnesota. Pre-K educators also play a critical role in creating and building on positive relationships with families who are just being introduced to our district for the first time and building positive relationships. And as a result, our educators communicate with families in multiple ways: email, phone, newsletters, class dojo, et cetera, which makes them accessible to parents often outside of paid time. You may not be aware that these educators are a part of a small number of certified teachers in the district who do not have access to the salary and benefits package that most benefit from. They instead are paid on an hourly basis and limited to no more than 34 and 1/2 hours per week, which keeps them under the threshold for full access to the salary schedule and benefits. However, because of these inevitable responsibilities that come with teaching outside of the contract hours, including prepping for classes, communicating with parents, purchasing needed snacks and supplies, committee meetings, and other responsibilities, none of that time is eligible for compensation because of the 34 and 1/2 hour limit, which is primarily spent educating our youngest, most vulnerable learners. Early childhood teachers must meet the same education level and certification requirements as their salaried peers. Each one holds a minimum of a bachelor's degree and a teaching license from the state of Minnesota, yet their access, their lack of access to the compensation and respect afforded by the salary and benefits package is both perplexing and disappointing. They are not asking for anything other than fairness and to be afforded the same salary and benefits available to the vast majority of teachers. These 11 educators love their students. They love having the opportunity to give the children in our community the best foundation for success as they introduce them to lifelong learning. Please consider treating them with compassion and fairness as you plan for the long-term health of our district. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comment for this evening. We'll move on to the approval of the minutes from our January 18. Is it special, John? Yeah, Special Organizational Meeting, sorry, the first item there.
Motion.
Sorry. All right, we have a motion from Director Donnelian with a second from Director Hyden to approve the Special Organization Board Meeting Minutes. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please, Kelly.
Michelle Breckin?
Yes.
EJ Donnelian?
Yes.
Randy Hyden?
Yes.
Sarah Spear?
Yes.
John Ward?
Yes.
Kevin Goeth?
Yes. Motion carries, thank you. Next up is the approval of the regular school board meeting minutes from January 8.
Make a motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion from Director Spear with a second from Director Donnelian to approve the regular school board meeting minutes from January 8. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please, Kelly.
EJ Donnelian?
Yes.
Randy Hyden?
Yes.
Sarah Spear?
Yes.
John Ward?
Yes.
Kevin Goeth?
Yes.
Michelle Breckin?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. We'll move on to the consent calendar then.
I'll move acceptance of the consent calendar, Director Ward.
Thank you, Director Ward.
Second.
Yes, okay. So we have a motion from Director Ward with a second from Director Hyden to approve the consent calendar as presented. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Director Ward.
I just wanted to notice again on the donation and grant, there's some significant ones in there. A lot of them are to the Garfield School for some work there and things, et cetera, whatever, but we really appreciate the fact that so many people are stepping forward and committing to our schools and our children, so thank you for that. I just wanted to point that out.
Excellent, thank you very much, Director Ward. Any other discussion or commentary? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote, please, Kelly.
Randy Hyden?
Yes.
Sarah Spear?
Yes.
John Ward?
Yes.
Kevin Goeth?
Yes.
Michelle Breckin?
Yes.
EJ Donnelian?
Yes.
Great, motion carries. We will slide on over to presentations. We'll do the MTSS Winter District Summary by Tim Murtha in Kyras.
Okay, we've been asked to bring forward a snapshot of screener data for student growth in multiple areas as a midwinter district check-in on how things are going. Kind of wish that, like your, well, Hyden, let's see, something we want to use. And now in position to get it out, and we move to fast-bridge assessments. Today, what we shared between this presentation is a snapshot of the entire district, broken grades 2 through 12, and then some early learning, about student growth in math, reading, social-emotional learning, and also in attendance, the most provided to the data around high school credit accrual at the midpoint of the year. What we're seeing in the data is, we're not seeing a tremendous amount of change in the rates of comparison between the fall and the winter. So you see in math, a 59% reading a benchmark in math for the fall, 61% in the winter. The thing to remember about the benchmark is it's a moving target. The benchmark increases in rigor as the year goes on to its ending point. So the assessment here, the conclusion from that data point is, our students are slightly growing faster than the rigor of the assessment. But that is not true in each of the other areas. So a reading, you indicate a mild downturn where what we clearly have is a population or populations of students who are not growing as fast as rigor is, but it's not a large group of the pool yet. We don't fully know what the implication of these patterns are since this is the first year we've done fast bridge. We've never done these, and then done an MCA in the spring to correlate them as a predictor of the MCAs. This is baseline data that next year, we will have, whoever, when I sit here, whoever sits here, someone else will sit here. At that point, they will be able to predict probably more completely than I can currently how it will impact students in the MCAs. So what we're seeing is growth, just not as much growth as we want to see, because what we know we need is gap closure. We need to have cycles of intensive growth, high growth, in order to close the gaps that exist within the system. Let's take a look at the two populations of students where we're seeing that they're not growing as quickly as the rigor of the benchmark is growing. First group would be students with economic disadvantage. These are free, low-cost loan students, it's a federal indicator of poverty. We see here, again, that they're a pool of students who are falling a little bit behind as time passes. What's significant about this group statistically is this is the largest group of students with an achievement gap of our students in poverty. The next slide will be special education, where you'll see the largest achievement gap than any other population. So we're seeing here, again, it's not a significant drift, but it is a softness in our data at this point.
And this population hovers around that 40% mark?
Around 42% of the district. But it is a population that, according to record, is declining. That means that as a percentage of the total district, it's shrinking. It has more to do with identification than it does to the students not being in poverty. The great pressure for identification historically has been filling out the paperwork forms so that families could get free, low-cost loan. Without that need now, there's less incentive to identify, even though there's many other programs in the district that are based on federal funding, which is hard. It's just going to weaken the situation. But I would be offering in this analysis is that this population is a little bit larger than our data indicates. Just want to remind you of that. When it comes to students in special education, here we see far more significant opportunities for growth, because we're not seeing growth occurring across the board. This is our largest group with a disability, and as a district, this indicates roughly 24% of our students, so almost 1 in 4 of our students fall in this category. At certain sites, that is a much higher proportion of the students. I believe Riverside is pushing 40% of the students. So this is where our overarching data, it doesn't look that bad. It could look better and it should look better, but as we drill down to the certain sub-populations, this is where we're seeing we need to focus our attention. Students in poverty, students in special. We'll do a question.
Yeah, I didn't know we were going to question, ask questions as we proceeded, so.
It's never stopped any of you before.
I know. I didn't want to be the first one. Going back to, I guess, the first, the first three slides. Do we have data that shows different buildings are better than other buildings as far as, you know, this is overall data, correct?
Correct, this is overall data. I would answer the question, not that other buildings are better than other buildings, other buildings are different than other buildings, in terms of both their makeup of their populations and the response to what's going on in the buildings. I don't want to say one building's better than another. All our schools do extremely, work extremely hard to do the best they can for their kids. Some have a little more challenges than others, different challenges. But yes, that data exists. I was asked, we were asked to keep this presentation to around 8 to 12 slides, because you know what will happen if you give me the carte blanche to do a data test. But yes, we can break it out by grade level, up through 8th grade, we can break it out through building, we can subdivide it in any one number of ways. We've all seen it in great presentations in September. That can be repeated by and large now, particularly as we get more practice with fast-bridge data, it will become easier for us to pull data, we'll learn how to do it faster.
Okay, I shouldn't have used the word better, but I mean, okay, do we have resources? Okay, I shouldn't have used the word better, but I mean, okay, do we have resources that we can provide for different buildings where we're not seeing the results that we're looking for?
Yes.
Is that, have you guys addressed that?
Part of the reason of moving to FastBridge is it includes not only the assessment that indicates to us that we have screened kids and we have identified populations, but within FastBridge are batteries of interventions that are specifically targetable to whatever the deficit of learning is. These exist as large whole group interventions, which can be applied to a whole class. So if a PLC or a whole grade level is looking at some component of instruction that they felt that the data indicated a soft was at, they have whole group resources, they can go back to address that in large. As you move further into the MTSS structure of the district, there's that second tier of MTSS, which is support outside the classroom. There are resources there. One of the great advantages of FastBridge over the previous research that we used with SCAR is it prioritizes for the teacher what they should work on with the student. Instead, SCAR used to give you a list of 100 things that would all be good for the student they have, you didn't know where to start. FastBridge will prioritize that and give you more context and more direct support. So it's specific to some populations. In the last couple of years, the district has invested significantly in elementary literacy resources for special ed. If they read well is an adopted curriculum that went through process a couple of years ago. We've trained a lot on it, we continue to train on it. As that picks up more steam in terms of being used, we're seeing some positive results there as well. The big thing for us now is moving through the adoption phase, the implementation phase of MTSS. That will require us to provide a lot more support to teachers on how to run the right reports, what the report is queuing you to, the screening intervention report, and how to use the interventions appropriately. Right now, what we did is we focused from the beginning of the year to now on, do I know how to give the assessment? If it's a technical assessment, so do we know how to issue the test, do we know like this? So the report running, that's the next step. So we'll be building capacity in teachers as we go through the next couple of whole service days and providing resources for them.
So the teachers pull their own report?
They can.
Do we help them?
Yes. This is new to them and new to us at the moment, so this is not the life's way of practice.
I just was thinking, in my world, somebody in administration or somebody would pull them and then maybe, here's yours, here's yours, here's yours, here's how you're doing, a little sit-down. I'm just curious.
Go ahead.
Can I interject?
Yes.
All of our school building leaders have data meetings with their teachers and their teams.
Well, they do.
Yep, whether it's by grade level or whether they're deciding who gets additional support outside the classroom. Those meetings are happening right now, so I don't have a lot of information about the impact of those meetings, but we just started being able to have those meetings in the way that you're describing because we have two data points. We couldn't do that very effectively in the fall because we only had one data point. So those are just happening now. The window just closed last Friday for this data, this is super fresh data. So using the data is happening as soon as possible.
Mr. Chair?
Director Ward?
Thank you for this information, Mr. Murtha and Ms. Ross. And I understand it's baseline, and it's great to have this baseline. And Ms. Ross, I think you just said that they have data meetings all the time within the buildings. So this information is new enough so that none of the educators, certified staff have seen this data, is that correct?
I don't know about individual buildings. I can look at the group behind me and they can give me a thumbs up if they've seen it recently, but we are just sifting through it right now. So I'm not, I'm not putting anybody on the spot by saying they should have looked at it or not looked at it by now.
Okay, thank you for that. So let me rephrase the question then. Will the educated or certified staff, with those dealing with especially reading and math, have input to this data and have, you know, some evaluation of their own, I think as Director Donlenger was pointing to as well?
Yeah, I want to reiterate what Mr. Murtha just said about teachers have access to their individual reports and their screening intervention reports, which are new, and they have opportunities to do that as a staff or individually as they need to. In special education, we support our special education staff with discussing options for progress monitoring and things like that at a grade level, or excuse me, at child study meetings or other meetings where we are able to support them. When folks ask, we provide support from the teaching and learning department for them to dig deeper, or they can do it on their own and they don't have to wait for us.
Thank you. And my last question is this, perhaps my last question would be this, is when is the next assessment data gonna be done to compare this baseline, this baseline data?
Well, we do have another window in the spring, within the last six weeks of school. As aligned in the REDACT, the first window is during the first six weeks of school, the last window is during the last six weeks of school, and then at some point over the summer when we have our data from student performance on the Minnesota Comprehensive Assessments, we can do some comparative.
Thank you.
Do we do?
Thank you.
Do we do interim assessments between the three scheduled?
In elementary, we do, and in secondary, we do, to the extent that students are identified for special education services, we do what we call progress monitoring probes, so.
Was that the part of that MTSS that you had explained to me, Ms. Ross, as far as maybe the teacher is gonna do some quizzing and stuff like that for students that maybe are starting to fall a little bit behind?
Yes, that is one of the, that is one of the options that they have, to do some progress monitoring or to use those intervention reports. Back to you, Mr. Murtha.
In addition to the academic data that we've shared out, we're also sharing out attendance data. The attendance data is offered as, this is also part of the challenge. We have populations of students who aren't making regular attendance and therefore they're not making growth. So this becomes a different challenge to address. The sites work on this through their SIP programs every single year, but what we need to make sure that we're meeting is a benchmark where 90% of our students are here 90% of the time. So this data that you see in front of you indicates the percentage of students who are making 90% of the school days up until the end of first semester. So that would be about nine days or less missed. And you're seeing about 85% of our elementary students are meeting it, around 70 to 80% of our Forest View students, and a little bit higher percentage of our high school students are meeting that benchmark right now. But that other, that other group, even though it's 10%, 15%, that is a tough nut to crack, is getting them in school and getting them activated to the academic environment. These are some of the barriers that we have to take down so students can take advantage of learning the time.
So you might have not have had time to do this because you're pulling this together for this presentation. Are you able to, at some point, overlay this data against the actual assessment data to see if it correlates in terms of the population? In other words, are our economically disadvantaged students also our under attending students? Is that really the question I'm asking?
It can be done. The time on that would take a little bit longer than all of us are comfortable with, but yes, we can do it. That would be an awful lot of thank you notes to Mrs. Anderson, the assessment coordinator of the district.
I wouldn't necessarily suggest that you do it, I was just curious if it was a doable, if there's anecdotal inferences that can be drawn on that.
The hypothesis we would start with is that there should be a correlation of the multi-exceptional student. So what we would expect to see, and now I'd want to do it because we've created the hypothesis.
You're welcome, thank you for a Pandora's box.
Okay, but what the hypothesis is that we're dealing with a multiple exceptional student. This is a student who is most likely in special ed. And as a result, is struggling with the sense of lack of growth, which is impacting attendance, which is impacting behavior, which is also a case of identification relative to populations of students in poverty. So what we might be seeing is all these things are tied together, which creates a very complex response that we have to develop in order to help each kid, and that's what our job is, is to show them.
Well, and then said another way from my perspective, I don't know that I was necessarily honed in on overlaying the exact data, but rather slicing just the attendance data by those same metrics, right?
We can do that.
I mean, you're gonna get sort of the same answer without having to go through the detailed thank you note process, right?
Well, maybe. That's what you're asking. Actually do it, you don't know, but you probably.
Correct, I do not know what I said is true, it's just a hypothesis.
Right. So what do you do? I mean, what is the goal? What is our, I mean, I know that you're concerned about this, and I know that every, I think pretty much everyone around here in this room thinks probably is. So what is the school doing to try to stop it? What do you do? I mean, is there, I mean, what do you do?
Are you speaking attendance?
Well, yeah, because it's pretty obvious that if you don't go to school, you're not gonna probably be able to keep up with the rigors, as you call it, that is moving up, and it's getting harder. You skip algebra for a week and then try and go through that, you're in trouble.
I think that what the sites are trying to do is what they should be trying to. They're trying to unpack each different child. So is your attendance, because you're feeling anxiety, or there might be some, need to be directed to mental health support as a way of overcoming the attendance issue? Or is there another issue where you're being asked to stay home to take care of small children because the family doesn't have daycare and mom has to work? There's this complex series of inputs that go into it, and what the sites do, since they know the children better than anybody else, they make sure that certain kids are sent home with bags of food every weekend, so there's food for the weekend, which increases the likelihood that the student will turn on another. They're gonna make sure that there are clothes, that there are clean clothes, which takes away some of the stigma that socializes about poverty, particularly students with rich relations. So they unpack that site, and always have issues, and so when we take a look at some of our socio-emotional learning data, what we see is growth. This is where we're growing most in this presentation, is in those areas. Why? Because the sites are focused on building relationships with children and friends. So with the academic stuff, we still haven't crossed over yet to, okay, now we got you here, now we're getting you caught up. Catching up is hard. And it is, and the type of reasons we lay out.
Well, is it fair to say, I mean, we've kind of addressed it in policy, whether by kind of cleaning up the policy and then trying to put a little bit more emphasis on enforcing the policies that we do have?
I think that her biggest focus is removing barriers. So again, when you look at those site levels and the relationship that the relationship that our teaching staff have and the buildings have with our students and families, what's the barrier? So chronic absenteeism is a nationwide issue, so we really focused on that, that point in our district for policy, our collaborative workers that are supporting the building, especially at the middle school and high school, they're spending a great deal on looking at those attendance issues. Our building administrators have addressed, the county commissioners. When you look at who's supporting truancy, we have one county worker and they can take a caseload of 20, our district is 6,500. And so when you look at those percentages, we need partnerships in our community to make that happen. So that's the next step of what we're trying to do to address attendance as well.
It's just sad because those, that 20% of Forest View kids, a lot of them are never gonna catch up.
Yeah, that sticks, it's gonna take a long time, like it would.
We provide lots of options, right? That's all the alternatives, all the wraparound supports we can do.
The last data point that we provided is a summary of first semester grades at the high school in the four core content areas as evidence of progressive college graduation on time. So you see that you should departmental grades are present. We brought the ninth grade grades out as well because students who have more than one failing grade in the ninth grade are significantly less likely to graduate on time. So that's the first data point the high school has, is that first semester of the year, to identify students who are at risk, who need to be in credit recovery or need to have intervention right away. And that is something that they work on. Credit recovery is part of the desired response to that. We do have some MTSS math in place now, thanks to the CARES Act, because they then add this grant. So there are some structures that we deploy as we move forward.
So these numbers would include your 24% specialized?
Yes. These numbers are district-wide numbers, so this is not just Brainerd High School. This would include the AEC and the LEC.
Oh, I thought it was IC, but it's made to IC, but it's not IC, like a channel. Sorry for that.
But truth matters, I should be title of the site, secondary or district-wide.
Mr. Chair?
Director Ward?
Thank you. Mr. Murtha, can you tell us the criteria that was used for, like, for the English department? 94.7 passing? What does passing mean? Tell me, tell us the criteria that was used for saying that a student passed?
69, or it'd be one percentage point or one times of a percentage point over an F.
So credit earned.
Minus minus minus, the credit earned.
Credit earned.
So that's 60.
Depends on the class, they're a little bit different.
If I heard you correct, Mr. Murtha, you say 60% or higher was used for the criteria? Is that correct?
The criteria is credit earned, so the transcript reflects the student passed the class. So whatever the lowest percentage the course allows, where that counts to pass, would be the correct number.
Okay. Mr. Chair?
Director Ward?
Thank you, and thank you for that, Mr. Murtha, I appreciate it. The other thing, I just wanted to make a comment on, you know, we're talking about severe absenteeism, and you know what? All of our schools do a great job of recognizing lots of great behaviors and criteria and facts that the kids do, like, you know, kindness and hard work and dedication. One of the things that maybe we can highlight in all of our selections or honoring is high attendance. Maybe that can be used as a criteria, no matter what, no matter what they are doing academically, or we want them to be also very productive, but maybe we can also, I'm assuming some of them do, but maybe we can highlight attendance, high attendance as a good criteria as well. Thank you.
They still do that at schools, don't you?
Perfect attendance?
Oh, remember that?
I think that we have to expand the idea from God is perfect attendance because perfect, once I miss one, and I'm out.
Yeah, you're out on that.
Okay. The, what I think Director Ward correctly asserts is the need for us to be recognizing the identifiable behaviors that can lead to success, but academically and socially. You see the sites do this already, particularly at the elementary, middle school level with students of the month. That would be the example of it. In each, in each of those cases, the site is identifying behaviors relative to their socio-emotional behavior framework that they want to recognize and honor that some student has displayed. And so that's, that's what they're doing in that. If there's a way to build that as a positive side of the MTSS structure, that would be kind of cool. I've taken all of this conversation out of Dr. Ross and all of this, and move Ross.
You're doing fine. I am, I am just here to support. You have any?
Yes, I would like you to do the statistics. Be I have looked at the behavior assessments as well.
Okay, so this year too, in our FastBridge suite, we've administered MYSAVER, which is an elementary measure that classroom teachers provide, gives up for their students, and then in grades five through 12, it's called SAVR, so the students do the self-reporting on their own. It measures risk indicators for socio-emotional behavior supports that might be needed. Much like our A-reading and A-math data that we shared previously, we've seen increases in students who are demonstrating low risk if towards that's FastBridge way of saying on track to meet end-of-year expectations, and the same in grades five through 12. Um, and the same in grades five through 12. Marginal increase from fall to winter. I'll just reiterate again, um, that we're still learning how to use this data. We keep finding more bells and whistles and aspects to understanding the data all the time. Uh, so this is just the 30,000 foot view, snapshot, if you will. And we continue to dig in and learn more.
Let me ask this question. When we talk about a student being at grade level, what does grade level mean?
Well, it depends on, it depends on what you're asking.
Okay.
If you're asking in math and reading, it's passing or exceeding on the Minnesota Comprehensive Assessment. In grades two through eight, 10 and 11. That's defined by a statute.
Okay. I was just curious, because we always talk about grade level, you know?
Grade level.
Um, you know, with the read act, you know, forget about the third grade reading out all the way through high school, grade level.
Yes, grade level is.
So what's going to be grade level of, and maybe we don't know this, what's going to be grade level at, uh, at 10th grade, 11th grade and 12th grade?
Well, 10th grade, we assess, uh, MCA's for reading and 11th grade is for math.
But those are at the end of the year.
All the MCA's are at the end of the year.
So what are we doing in the meantime? And that's what the MTSS is, or Fastbridge is for, right? Again, to catch some of this stuff.
Yep. Um, MTSS and Fastbridge go hand in hand, so we're not surprised at the end of the year.
Correct.
You might need support in order to be.
Right, right. That, that's a nice part of that program, as you guys explained it to me that one time.
Yep.
Really cool.
That's the plan.
Oh, yeah?
That's the point I was making about how the benchmark grows throughout the year. The state standard, the benchmark of the state standard is end of year master. Where it starts in September, as Fastbridge assesses it, is lower than the end of year. This instruction, we assumed about the curve. So as the year progresses, the benchmark, the assessment gets closer to the end of year benchmark level of the year. And that's what they're trying to keep them up with as a minimum, one year growth. But what we need is for some populations, more than a year growth in multiple years at one point.
Mr. Murth, I just have a quick question. I don't know if you know the answer to this, but what is the difference in free and reduced student quota from last year to this year? Do you know?
I would write that question to Alyssa, who I believe is here. She, all, every piece of paper blends on her desk and she could be probably, if it's short notice, um, find a concrete answer.
Just a.
Sure, yeah, sure, stand up.
We are universal free meals start this year, so paperwork is down.
Right.
However, we're still getting, um, all of our free and reduced information through a variety of different sources. So our paperwork applications are a little bit down this year. I would consider last year to be an anomaly, because it was the first year we had the MA benefits come in and paper. I would consider this year to be more accurate.
Okay. Did you want the number? Yeah, do you know the number roughly?
46% last year, 42% this year.
Okay.
And since COVID, I mean, that's been kind of a difficult thing to get our arms around because of the, the people not filling out the paperwork since the.
Me too.
So that's like a three-year problem that's been going on.
Right.
I'm sorry.
The opportunity.
I, can I have something real quick? Sorry. And if you answered this already, I apologize. Did you say, um, the Sabers, the benchmarks are static, or that they also increase in regard throughout the year?
I'm going to defer a comment on Sabers, because I don't know how they measure end of year benchmark on SEL.
Um, they do measure it differently than the academic test. I don't, I think they are, I'm going to have to guess, and then I'll get back and clarify when we, um, at our committee meeting. Um, this, the benchmarks are static, but how students rate themselves is on a Likert scale. So, um, I, I could be working on some socio-emotional behavior goals through the course of the year that are related to my data. Um, and then I'm using the same benchmark, but I'm scoring myself with a评分 score as I go through all the years. But maybe I didn't feel really connected to my school community at the beginning of the year, but I'm changing that score as I go through the course of the year, as I get more involved and connected to my classmates. That would be an example.
Well, I think the elementary especially, but I think these numbers are something to celebrate.
Mm-hmm.
That's awesome. Because I think students do need to feel connected and safe to be available to learn.
Just on a personal note, um, I have received a lot of emails, uh, from teachers as well. And I will be coming into the classrooms, but I want to, this was something I had asked Dr. Han to include on this, uh, board meeting agenda. As I stated in the annual, my focus is going to be on assessments, meeting goals, and stuff like this. So I will not be visiting any teachers until we have a contract settled, because I don't want to be talking about contracts. I want to be talking about kids. I want to be talking about how are things going on in your building? So this is, this is good, good stuff. I like this.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Move along to the new business, and we'll start out with the approval of the 2022, 2023, 2022, 2023 annual audit report. I've seen Mary.
Waiting all year for this, you two.
I need, I need all of you to remember last year, we have to spare a minute from the rest now. For our audit run, I'm going to let her take it away and I'll just sign in.
Does everybody have the? Well, thank you for having me tonight. We'll just briefly go through the PowerPoints. Again, just a little bit easier to view, um, have some graphs in charge. You can kind of see where the district was at and where they're at currently. Um, everything ties back to the audited financial statement. It's just a little bit easier to go through. Try not to put everybody to sleep. It would be nice. So we'll go through the PowerPoint. Feel free to stop me if you have questions at any time. Um, as we go through this, things might come up, a little bit busy, so I don't know. So we'll go through theirs. Um, required communication, so our primary responsibility is auditors to provide an opinion on the fairness of the financial statements. Um, we do review internal accounting controls. We want to make sure that there's controls in the district and that they're working. Obviously cannot test every transaction, so we do some detail level transaction testing and then some higher level comparisons, current year, prior year, current budget. Um, if anything looks out of ordinary, we test those in more detail. We did test in detail federal awards, and we'll list those out as the ones that tested a little bit further in the audit. New accounting policies with GASB 96, so subscription-based information technology agreements. Close hand in hand with what was implemented last year for leases. Um, this year it's more of the online information that we had to associate. Page three, then, um, within the bound document, of course, there's going to be management judgments and common estimates there. Federal education, we try and take the best estimate, um, at the latest possible time of the audit, so it can be the closest to what it is, but again, just an estimate out there. Um, and then again, your net pension liability is going to be your parent and TRA. Those get estimated each year, and we take those updated numbers each year on that. No disagreements with management, we would let you be aware of that. Um, difficulties encountering forming the audit, I'm pretty sure Marcy's kept you in the loop. A little bit delay in the financial information. Um, you're still, you know, dealing with capital projects, um, coming in, trying to get those under control. Doing all of your ESER awards as well. If you look, you've received about 6 million, um, that you've spent over this past year. And remember, those will be rolling off as well when we go to do the questions. Within the financial statements, um, no uncorrected or corrected in the statements. So when we come in to do the audit, usually fairly clean, uh, once we do get that information. So overall summary of the audit results here, so the financial statements, we issued an unmodified or clean opinion, um, highest level of assurance that us as auditors can give. One material weakness, same as last year, um, preparation of financial statement, mostly because we have the time, right? We do it all day, every day. Um, to put that on Marcy would even be late on. So at this point, we have that final. Marcy does review it in detail. She sees that final graph.
I can't make a lot of sense. I'm not, I try to keep up with what I can, but there are more current standards.
Um, so we did test single audit like I discussed. So anytime the district spins over 750,000 in federal awards, we do have to do a special test on those. The major programs are pretty determined. Um, we have to go through a checklist, and if a certain program needs something of that item, we do have to test it. So that's why you'll see, um, the education stabilization fund, coronavirus and local fiscal recovery funds. Volatiles are high risk, just due to ESER funds. And then your child nutrition cluster is just in the low tier. So that wasn't full this year, um, because it had to be tested as well. Overall, no findings found. So even with that new money coming in, the district's able to maintain compliance with all of the laws. Minnesota Leo compliance, we do about a 25-page checklist there, and no findings found. We'll get into the general fund here. You can see far left is 2023, and then it goes back to the part right of 2019. So way up top, you have your total revenues and total expenditures. Then down at the bottom, I did that actual comparison to budgets here. So overall revenues at 92 million, budgeted for about 91. Actually came in at a positive 634,000 there. Expenditures at 92.1, um, budgeted for 93, so came in better there too. Reduction of about 952,000 there. Other financing sources and uses, about 977 there. Lease liability that came in, um, the SB standards requires to put it down there. So overall net change in, um, fund balance, positive 891,000. We actually budgeted for loss of about 87. So came up positive about 2.6 there. As you look up again at the top of that, about three quarters of the way down there, you'll see your unassigned fund balance did grow a little bit from last year, but you also did spin down some of that restricted fund balance and your assigned fund balance all decreased there. So those categories restricted, um, is grants or funding coming in that can only be spent on certain items. Unassigned is basically the remainder that can be spent day to day. So page seven, your general fund unassigned fund balance per ABM here, um, just over 2,000 when you look at that. Again, did increase from the prior year. Again, your ABMs, we'll talk about later, also had an increase because you decreased in the ABMs, right? So if your, if your base number changed, this is going to make it a lot faster. And then the next page just goes to show your unassigned fund balance compared to your percentage of expenditures. Um, so you're at about 13% this year. When you look at your unassigned fund balance compared to your expenditures. Um, so right about where you want to be for a district of yourself, right? With so much expenditure.
Is that still, that's still distorted a little bit by the CARES one that's sitting in there.
With your expenditures, correct. So if your expenditures drop, correct, this will increase. Page nine, here's your food service. Um, the same numbers again, down at the bottom, we have actual 4 million, budgeted 4 million. So really doing a little bit lower by about 73,000. Expenditures, um, actual 4.3, budgeted 4.3, 13,000 dollar difference. Overall net change, um, budgeted for loss of about 227, actual loss of 313,000. If you go up and if you look at 2022, right, so food service, 21, 20, you know, you're really pretty much flatlining there. 22, all of a sudden you have a huge gain, right? All those federal awards coming in, food costs weren't that high. The, um, MBE does, is going to require you to spend that down. So having a loss this year is fine. You might see that a couple more years, that you're going to try and spend that money down.
So a question is, I thought they changed the food things really, though, like, oh, was that this year?
Because you already have the free food. Last year, it was still paying. And we had a case of.
And what all those in there, is that payroll, food?
Um, that's, I quote, the water, food, by shaving of the, the market.
And then if you replace any of the equipment type items, can you spend in food services?
Are you just expensive?
On this, on food service fund level, yes. District, if you look at the district wide statements, you would see them a lot, but not the fund level. Page 10, goes to the community service fund here. Um, revenues of 3.7, budgeted for about 3.5, so came in there about 280,000. Expenditures, actual at 3.5, budgeted at 3.6, so came in lower than expected, 115,000. So budgeted for loss of 176,000, came in at positive 218,000. Um, so good when you look at that, you know, going back from 19 to 22, all of them have losses. Um, this first year gain there. Really, when you look at it, though, community service shouldn't be, um, in the, in making money. All of your categories right now are positive, so really each of those categories that are within community service are really funding themselves, right? None of those are having a huge loss that are being changed. They're really operating in a good way.
As a community head.
Page 11, debt service fund. Here, you're required to levy 105%. If you have too much in fund balance, the state will come in and adjust that. Um, so if you see losses here, that's probably the reason behind there. But really operating the way it should, positive 812,000 there, restricted fund balance about 3.6. Capital projects funds, you've been going pretty steadily for quite a few years now. Again, um, a new issuance this year, if you look at your other financing sources and uses, 10.6 million there. So then you spent down about 18.5, left you with restricted fund balance of 9. Hopefully that will be wrapping up soon. I think Marcy would be first. So the next one is just your sources of revenues coming in for the district. Now, this is combined with everything. A little bit of a shift from last year. Last year, you had about 12% in federal. So you're going to continue to see that decline. Two aspects of that, last year, you had 100% federal funded meals. This year, when representing, you have to have paid meals, so that decreased it. And then your ESER will change to, um, ESER will start to go down as well. This year, that, that you're in currently, the fiscal year, um, federal and state money. So your federal will go opposite. So page 13, then, will give you the graph. You can kind of see, um, the change here. So other local, um, probably even there, a little bit of drop from last year. Food service would have gone into there this year. Far right, we talked about federal, they're increasing as well. Um, everything else, pretty consistent the other year. Page 14, so then where do those revenues go out? Here are the expenditures. Again, this bar chart is going to be skewed year over year until your site building and equipment are kind of spent down, your projects are done. So I like to flip to the next page. Um, it really gives you a bar chart of your categories here, so you can see them year over year and how they fluctuate. So your site building and equipment are going to be all of your projects going into there. But overall, pretty, pretty consistent on those expenditures here over here by category.
Well, what are, what is the structural support, student support, district support?
Um, basically anything in the classroom for supporting students. What would you like to do?
It would not be?
Would not be. Trying to make it seem, that's very broad, right?
Well, that's, it's all seems kind of broad to me. It's like, it's 20 million bucks, so it's like, it's a big chunk of our budget.
Yep.
So pupil support, just give me an example. People. Gotcha.
Actually, everything until you get to site building from the left to the right is people.
Ah, man. Well, I can understand administration, structural, all these things.
But as a percentage of the whole, it's all greatly skewed by the next one where you have those huge things 'cause that just goes, that'll flatline for the most part.
Is community head all people? Is that what it is?
There's supplies and services in there.
Does instructional include supplies? Okay, so it's not just?
Well, just the category. So admin would be anything that's been on, you know, people and supply services.
Okay.
Yep. So it's a broad category.
I think, Mary, if I heard you right, the one under site building, I mean, that's gonna go, it's gonna drop off the edge because we're done with the major capital projects. So the rest needs, as percentages of the whole will change instructional right now because of the, that's why you skipped the previous chart because like, site in building was like thirty percent or something and that's gonna be.
And normally it's what, one or two percent? Even when you really look at it, unless you're.
And on that one, instructional was sixty percent, so that, as a, as a, as a chunk of the pie chart will go up significantly.
Which is why I didn't want to hit on it because I can't compare Utah like schools right now, right? You're, you're too capital project intensive to kind of see where that is at. So then the next one is your breakout expenditures, just a different way of looking at it by object. And what, you should dominate if you had those salaries here, biggest piece of that rate at forty percent. Again, capital expenditures will skew. So if you wanna go to the next page, I did do a bar chart of that one as well. So you can kind of see that.
And excuse me because normally salary is not necessarily like the biggest chunk of our budget, right? So if you look back at this graph.
Well, they still are, 'cause that's gonna go away.
And that's her point.
But when you aggregate them all together in a normal year, it's gonna be north of seventy-five percent of our total cost.
Exactly, whereas on this, it's almost pricing.
So then we'll take a look at the average daily memberships. Here you can see prior year, all the way back to twenty nineteen, far left. So really each year you have declined in enrollment since twenty nineteen. This year decreasing by almost a hundred there. Biggest decrease is gonna be your secondary, which gets the harvest rate because you get the one point two there in secondary. All that affects the funding. So then on next page, we like to show the resident students versus the non-resident students. Here you actually gained ground with your non-resident students and dropped in your resident students. So then the next page shows you actually your open enrollment gain or loss as well. And you can see a little bit bigger loss than prior year.
The, the non-resident students, we're not doing that back. So it's our ones that should be here. You know, the, the C phone green is the one that's, that's digging that so bad. If you look at the non-resident students, you know, three ninety-nine, three seventy-three over four or five years, it's not so bad. But that seven fifteen to the nine seventy-nine is kind of quickness. It's almost, it's turning around, showing you kids.
A significant amount of that is online.
But so we, so why don't we count them online? Aren't they in our online?
No, we have online program at the high school. But when you look at comprehensive online, online starts all the way down to kindergarten.
Yeah, but we're losing them on the previous slide. We're losing them in the secondary, you said. More than the little kids who seem to be keeping.
Yeah, our biggest migration to online tends to happen at middle school. And so that's what the creation of the high school online program and option. We've seen students maintain and actually start to grow. We have students coming around, around, like we're starting to get a broader swap. And when you look at during COVID, so you look at that, you know, right, you can reference COVID. COVID opened the door where a significant amount of students migrated to online and they've stayed online. So that's where the district were responding, was creating, we started that pre-COVID as well, to have a comprehensive high school program. So right now at Brainerd High School, you can get your high school diploma online. Not with us.
But there's also been an increase in online opportunities as well.
Again, if you took these trend lines and published all the way back to two thousand and twelve, you can see that the trend just, we just cut it off at two thousand and nineteen, but it's consistent for the last twelve years.
Well, we need to figure it out, or we're gonna have some troubles. Well, you're gonna be riding up in the sunset, but some of us are gonna have some things to figure out.
Well, I think that's the response to online, right? Creating that online option that's now existent within a high school where a student can receive their high school call.
I think it'd be great to have a presentation on that in April, actually, because there's some really exciting stuff going on with the online program that we're just kind of getting to learn about.
Some of these kids doing the college thing, I mean, is Arl online? Can they do the P S E O deal and get some credits for it, or is it no?
Yes. They can do online and get P S E O credit. But that's a partnership with C L C. So, but those students are still counted as art students. So they'll be reflected in the.
So even if they were online, because they'd be our online, P S E O.
They're in art, correct.
No, guys, doing some of the teaching.
Could some of these kids not be going to school at all?
Homeschool would be.
Well, no, just to say they just dropped out. Sixteen years old, they don't go to school anymore. Does that not happen online?
It does, but that would be reflected as a student out of district. So they'll have to be registered somewhere, either homeschool, online, or in another district. Be reflected in that line green. Our, our largest amount of students.
The low hanging fruit right there.
Well, largest amount of students going online is happening at middle school level. So that's the next decision for the district to look at developing. You start to offer some online opportunities at a middle school level, knowing that that's where a continuing population is continuing to maintain and gravitate towards. We have not done that. For nine twelve, for online education.
How many districts in the state offer online education? Districts our size.
It's really dependent.
Is it common?
It's becoming more and more common post-COVID, yes.
I know in southern Minnesota, they actually have group of schools that work together for online teaching. And we can keep them, but it's all one course that we do together.
So they consolidate basically.
Well, I was reading those rules. One of our policies today, and it says you have to have one teacher for forty kids. So, which makes sense for a certain class, right?
It's very dependent on the course offered. So where we're at, we can give a presentation on it in April. So we're not comprehensive because a comprehensive online would include all special education services. We've done the credits needed to be earned. You have an opportunity starting in ninth through twelfth grade where you can do that all on online. And that's been developed. Christina Lundgren and a team of high school staff have been amazing in trying to adapt and, and create this. It's approved by M V E. I think the one thing I will say that's very different from about our online school through Brainerd High School. A lot of online schools are offering basically a canned curriculum that's purchased and people go in and do it computer based. Brainerd High School online, you're working directly with a licensed teacher. In that subject matter, you have access to a licensed live teacher, being able to meet with them. Where a lot of online programs are basically sitting and working themselves through a computer process. We tried to do it very differently because that was our approach to high quality academic education. So, but it's a demand. Like when you ask about Ask, we've had teachers who've had to morph and start to do those things. But we're reaching a threshold, right? I think we have six hundred and twenty-seven seats of online classes right now. Fair enough, the statistic from Christina Lundgren. Or do we need to start hiring some full-time staffer online? Do we need to develop online in the middle school? Our intent when we looked at our data for online wasn't necessarily people migrating out. When we looked at students going P S U of high school, they're taking a class to basically create an open hour to maybe be able to take band, orchestra, and choir. So we responded to that data set first. We're maintaining and holding those students. Now it's going back and expanding that, letting the community know that we have this online option. Letting some of our homeschool families know if you wanna take A P Geography or some of these other courses that can be offered, we have those opportunities, so.
We have separate staff? Do we have separate staff?
No, this is all of our current staff at the high school.
Current staff will do it during a free hour?
And it's all been, well, it's built into their course schedule, or some of them are taking it as an extra overload.
Well, the six hundred and forty, so just, I guess I guess what you said, doesn't matter. That's individual classes. It could be two hundred kids taking three classes at least.
So right now, the majority of our students of that six twenty-seven are taking one online course.
I see.
We have a smaller number that start to take two or three. So a lot of our students are creating that hybrid model for themselves, which is what the high school responded to to keep high school students basically within our high school. Now that's growing, we're starting to see more students of like that. But the intent is, some of these students who've left to go online, is what we're also finding, is some of our students that leave to do online, they come back and now they're further behind. We're creating.
Let me ask you this question. For online, could you just YouTube? Let's, let's take a tenth grade geography class. Fifth hour and the kid wants, you know, he wants that, to take that online. Could we YouTube that out to him? Where they're actually watching?
You can't ask a question, you know, it's hard to ask a question.
It's, so, the online courses, right? Some of the students are physically there in the building and some of them are not. So, but that online course is not sitting in the classroom anymore. So it's not through YouTube, it's typically through a Google Meet or just the online coursework that they're doing. But I guess like the difference is, we have licensed staff that are licensed in the content, that are an expert in that content. That if I'm an on, let's say, we haven't gotten there yet, where there's a student who's a hundred percent online, right? Because these courses have been built, but that's coming. But let's say as a parent or guardian, why my kiddo's struggling in geography, I really need them to go talk to that geography teacher. They could do it via technology, or there's an opportunity to actually physically come in and see. You have all sorts of guidelines of how you qualify to take that course, how you continue in that course, passing rates in the courses. But it's been a five-year development process. For staff, but that's responding to some of the students who are seeking, but that's the largest, they're seeking an online option.
So who does the online school that doesn't have licensed teachers? Like these ones you buy the, buy the curriculum, or are you talking about parents? Like parents, obviously, they're homeschooling their kids. And I'm sure there's some licensed teachers that also look at it, but.
There's different schools how they approach it, because I can purchase a curriculum, that's a digital curriculum, and basically just manage that. I may not be licensed in that, but I can manage that curriculum. So I don't have the exact data, but I would say that's more common than it is to have a full online high school with those licensed staff members teaching and managing, content responding to the assessment, responding to students compared to just working through a digital curriculum.
But I keep going over here till midnight.
So this next one just kind of gives you an overall of your expenditures, administration, and district support category for A D M. A year behind just because the information isn't out yet for current year. But the dark blue is the district and then a light blue is state average. And then the green is your district's A D Ms over four thousand, so comparable to the district. You can see here, those costs are fifty-eight lower than the others. This one is your total instruction for A D M. Again, dark blue being the district, state, and then A D Ms over four thousand here. And then you can see this is over the state for a lot of these categories. And then just a little bit shy of districts over four thousand.
You say that's related to our special education expenses?
Yes.
So said in other ways, because we have a higher special education student population than the average district and state?
No, we have a, we said one in four. And then we just look at our cross subsidy of what we're spending. I don't wanna, that's what I asked, but that would be my assumption is when I see that cost actually significantly higher. Large special education requirement for medical services.
Take a quick look at the self-insurance fund then here. Expenses being dark blue, revenue being nineteen, and then your overall net position here. So when you look, you know, your net position is fairly stable. Expenditures and revenues have been somewhat consistent here than both, in the current year, they both kind of line up there to keep your net position much the same.
Fund in nineteen twenty and twenty twenty-one are a little skewed because of COVID, right?
And this is our, this is our, we're self-insuring our health.
Yeah, this is the, the reserve for that.
It's just health insurance, right?
So, yeah, yeah, well.
But we have self-insured buildings as well.
No, no, it's not B and C or anything like that, it's just, it's, it's insurance is. But in particular, in those two years where they're lower in there, what I'm saying is, you know, those years, people underutilized healthcare. Most people didn't go to the doctors much, so it built the reserve to an unprecedented level at one point.
Which is, right, which is why the twenty-one, twenty-two expenses are so much higher, plan that spend down of the net position.
Mr. Chita?
Director Ward.
Thank you. On the self-insurance fund and the health insurance, are we keeping track of the impact that the call-in health service that is now offered in the district is making on the health insurance fund?
Are you talking about the health savings?
Yeah.
Health insurance, I believe. Well, they actually have been keeping track of that and as part of their statistics and whatnot. We just have a presentation at the last meeting, showing the stats.
So the, the short answer, Director Ward, is it is having an impact. The longer answer is that there was a really, really strong positive impact at the beginning of the school year because there was a lot of education that went out in the beginning. So the adoption rate was off the chart. It probably needs a full year of utilization to really be able to, you know, kind of benchmark it.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Great question.
Next one, just kind of gives you your net position overall. If you look at your expenditures, expenses, and revenues here. Just again, the swings aren't normal, so hopefully twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-two, and twenty-three will be a little more consistent of going forward as well as you try to adapt. Comes a brief overview, hopefully no surprises for anyone. I know Marcy updates the board fully detailed. I don't know if there are any additional follow-up questions?
I make a motion to accept it, unless we're gonna go through the hundred and twenty-one page or?
I think that's what we're gonna do next.
All right, so we have a motion from Director Donneler with a second from Director Spear to approve the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three annual audit report. And, does that mean where else the motion included the signed financial statement? She didn't want to go through the hundred and twenty-one page?
No, I'm with it, I, I speak for this one.
All right, so, motion includes both. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call over.
Sarah Spear?
Yes.
And John Morton?
With appreciation, yes.
Kevin Boiles?
Yes.
Michelle Bruckin?
Yes.
B J Donneler?
Yes.
Randy Hyken?
Yes.
Great. I would also entertain a motion that Kelly should give some of her winnings from the big event to Marcy.
I think, Director Boiles, if I can, if you think about the millions that were just reviewed, and the only finding is timeliness. When we look at having one business manager, one accountant, and one accounts payable individual, you're looking at three individuals who, I'm looking at Marcy, she needs the data, that are managing millions upon millions of dollars. And you look at all the CARES applications and all the weird rules that came in. And you look at two hundred plus million dollars worth of building projects. And we have no findings, other than we need to be more timely in getting the information. So I also wanna stay at this table. We went through a federal audit of our CARES fundings. So again, hundreds of applications, hundreds of data entry with one business manager, one accountant, one accounts payable, with not one finding. So when you talk about fiscal responsibility, fiscal accountability, transparency is in there. It's, I, they've done an incredible. It's, I, they've done an incredible, incredible job. And they should be exhausted, like you said they have. So, and I'm very grateful to Ms. Reedy and Clifton Allen Larson for the support they continue to give us. It's been a really weird few years to navigate, and you guys have adapted well with us as well. So thank you.
And I was going to chime in on that too, because, yes, we've had our troubles, and thank you.
So, I'd give Marcy a standing ovation.
All right, thank you, Mary. See you next year.
Might as well start now.
All right, we'll move along to the approval of the first revision for the 2023-2024 budget as presented by.
We weren't ready for an app yet, we're going to get there. Um, the document that's in your packet is more lengthy, similar to the financial statement presentation. The presentation that I'm putting before you is really focused on the general fund, and the document shows all funds. So please let me know if there's any other questions that you have or not covering the other funds. I did update on the summary sheet. You'll see I updated the descriptions on there to match the fund balance policy. I know that was discussed when we looked at the fund balance policy. It was kind of confusing. So I did try to add the description so you can see the categories of unassigned, assigned, non-spendable, and restricted. And the 22-23 revised budget was the starting point for our 23-24 preliminary budget. So that's what's on this screen here. That was our starting point. And then this is, was the audit which we just went through, right? That, this is the sum, the summary that I use versus what's in the financial statements, but they match, so just a brief picture for you. And then a comparison of the two. So the 22-23 revised budget had a deficit of about 626,000 in unassigned, and then the actual was that 1.3 million excess that Mary pointed out. And I know that seems like a large swing, but when you look at all of our expenses, that's actually only a difference of 2% of our budget. So, you know, when we're talking millions of dollars, it's like, whoa, but it's 2% of our budget. So, just want to point that out. The community services, I wanted to point out also, had a projected deficit. Mary pointed that out as well, but then came in in excess, which is good. We're getting our programs back up and running, so hopefully we can continue. I know she noted that, you know, you really don't, they're supposed to be self-supporting, right? But not necessarily making a profit. There are some of them, for example, school readiness, that we do struggle. She said that we're all in the black, but that is one that we are always kind of riding that wave. On the next slide. So, when we looked at the 23-24 preliminary budget, these are some of the assumptions we used. 4% increase on the gen ed formula, a decrease of enrollment of 140 adjusted pupil units, an increase in the compensatory and sped revenue, and then increase in any labor agreements and related benefits, and then contracted transportation.
What's the 110% increase up here?
So, basically, our compensatory revenue has doubled because, as Alyssa noted, our free and reduced numbers went up substantially last year. Our compensatory revenue is based on our free and reduced counts. So when those go up, our compensatory revenue goes up. Well, yeah.
We said that's an anomaly because you're starting to see it come back down. So that's going to be the weird, wait, so that's a very cautious, you don't want to go too all because it's kind of a blip.
So, in our preliminary budget, we were down the 140, so we were at 5,856 for 23-24. And in the preliminary budget, the unassigned deficit was going to be a projected excess, sorry, I said deficit, I meant excess of 901,000. Go forward to, excuse me.
And just a reminder, though, when you see the student, she's speaking ADM, not pupil.
Correct.
So again, we've all gone through that lesson, but it's not actual students, it's average daily membership, which is weighted differently based on each level of each student.
So when we work on the, when the revision is being worked on, we look at students. That's our primary revenue generator, and then also our staff, right? Those are the big ones. So with the students, we increased the adjusted pupil units by 44 based on the October 1 count. And then we updated the salary and benefits with any known staffing changes we had. And we review all account codes. And I just, to give you guys a little background, there's 384 balance sheet accounts, 379 revenue accounts, 7,149 expense accounts, and the revenue and expense accounts are 17 digits. And I did not choose that, that's defined by the state. All of those. Those are the ones that are active. I have way more than that that are inactive.
The one you wonder why it takes so long.
Which account do you input this to?
And they all mean, so when you, you look at those reports from the audit, this is perfect because when you look at admins, instructional support, those are all defined by those account codes. Each, each section means something to the state. First one's the fund, the second one's the site. What site are we at? Third one is the program. What are we doing? Are we buildings and grounds? Are we in, in the classroom? The third one is just kind of Brainerd-specific. Is it a grant? Is it a whatever? The third one could mean federal or state restriction. And then the last one is what are we buying? Are we doing salaries? Are we doing supplies? So, 17 digits, that's my world.
And if you ask her for one, she'll rattle it off.
Of course. Smart.
And then, just to note, I don't have it on here, but food service, we did add. Last year, we received the supply chain assistance, and we did get that again this year. So that was added, that was the major change in food service. So when you look at enrollment, with that adjustment, we are now looking at 5,900 for adjusted pupil units with this revision.
How come it says 6,500?
At the very bottom, so that's projecting all the way to.
Oh, I see, that's 1920.
Yep. Nope.
Pull up the ones for me, or do you want to continue on?
You tell me.
Go back to the first one.
This one?
Show 23-24 at the top.
Yep.
So we think it's going to go down another 425 kids?
That's what the model's showing at preliminary budget. Um, now that we fast forward to this one, that those numbers have changed, but they are still showing a decline.
So where do you get those numbers from?
It's all statistical averages of birth rates, our, our transition between grades. It's a whole bunch of data on one spreadsheet that calculates.
Does the state give you?
It actually provides.
That's how I thought, I kind of remember.
I think the biggest difference too, we used to see, you know, we'd have kindergarten classes of 500. So if you go all the way back to that chart that Marcy shows, now we have kindergarten classes that are just around 400. And so as you watch that 12-year trend of they move through the system, it's not like all of a sudden they're going to jump back up. So there's a compounding factor when it comes to, you're looking at overall per pupil unit, ADM, but that's the consistency. You're starting to see that smaller kindergarten class now roll into the middle school level. And we had a little blip, so there are about 50-ish parents that decided, hey, I can both my kindergarten or back one year. There are current second graders, right? So we see a large blip in our second grade, but that's not weird as of course is the classes that come behind them. So, there's a lot of pieces to try to do our best estimate on setting the budget projection.
So, when we do all of that, revise the budget, we're looking at a deficit, excuse me, I'm used to saying deficit, can you help? An excess of 652,000 in the unassigned. And I do want to note that there's a new line on here, the restricted literacy incentive aid. So in the past, we received that aid, right? That was going into the general fund, but with the legislation this last year, they are making it restricted, so we have to account for it separately. It's not just rolling into the general fund. So I just want to point that out. That is a new line item on here.
Can we freeze right there, Marcy?
Yeah.
So go back. So the biggest thing, why we're all used to saying deficit? So I've been in administration and budgeting now, I think, 18 years. This is the first year we have an excess, and our fund balance has increased. And the only reason there's an excess in the fund balance is because of our CARES. And I think what the district has done, thoughtful planning of it, is if you watch districts around the state, they're looking at really massive reductions, as that, we call it, the CARES cliffball approaches. We try to be very mindful in budgeting and being conservative with our budgeting. Any place that we could, where the state allowed us to supplant, we did, knowing we'd have to prepare for that reduction of dollars. And so, this is the good news, is a lot of that thought process and that planning is going to pay off in the end, although we're still going to end up, when we set the budget for '24, '25, we're going to be looking at starting it with a more than likely a deficit. Because we have about two, just over $2 million worth of positions that are in CARES funds right now that we now have to matriculate back over. So that's the, the balance that you've been hearing about and we've been working on for the last 12, 18 months as we've looked forward, so.
So as noted, the excess in the unassigned reduced to 652. The ending unassigned fund balance, I just want to explain, when you look at the second bullet on each column, it's, the difference is greater than what the change in the unassigned is because that snapshot in your preliminary budget is taking what we're projecting with the budget revision and putting that into that column. But then the column on the right is taking access. We know what the actual ending fund balance is, and then putting it in with the budget revision. So, just want to point that out, I know that can be confusing. Uh, this slide, you guys are here with me all the time. So with this revision, our projected fund balance would be about 13 million, a little more than a month and a half, and the state recommendation is three months. So just bringing that out. I'm always talking about our fund balance.
David Soler.
Yep.
Can I go, go back two slides? Again, I want to look at, when you look at trying to predict what's going to happen with staffing, contracts, all those pieces, if we looked at where we had a preliminary projection and where we're, where we're ending up, and we're talking over a $100 million budget. And we're within 250,000, and it's very.
But it then begs you back to page 12, which again, this is a misleading slide still, if you're not, if you're not in this every day. 13.7% is not 13.7% because of the CARES clifffall.
So you could reduce that, we need to figure out.
We're really still hovering right in that 10% range when you get right down to it.
And that's how we plan our budget, with all the federal ins and outs?
Yeah, I'm just, like, anybody looking at this, doesn't live in it every day, would wonder why there's all that extra money and there, there isn't.
So what's next? I have not ever done a second revision, but if needed, necessary, if we had some material changes, I would do, present a second revision to the school board to change the budget to whatever it was, you know, if we suddenly had a drastic decrease in enrollment or something, you know, something that would be material, then we'd present a second revision. The 23-24 revision that we presented tonight would be our starting point for the 24-25 budget. And then the assumptions, again, we'll look at for next year is the change in formula, enrollment changes, changes in local or other state and federal aids, and then employee contract costs. Are there any questions? And I'm hoping that as we talk about budget, we have a finance committee meeting in April, I can present kind of an overview of where we're at with next year's budget.
I was going to just say, now that we have this done, and the audit's done, now becomes the real hard work of, okay, let's look at the staffing that we have based in CARES dollars, where is that out? How do we apply that across buildings? So that'll be the next busy four weeks with administration and bringing that back to the board level.
Director Donneler? So, is it, I was understanding that the food deal with the state was pretty much going to be a, there wasn't much benefit for us to be fiscally responsible because it didn't make any difference. It's kind of a dollar-for-dollar thing. But is it paid on ADMs, or is it paid on pupils, or how do we get paid?
Paid on claims, and I'm going to.
That's what I mean, so I thought it was like, it was one of those fancy terms you got, sort of the old provider or whatever. You just, you, you apply for the money to get it back, right?
Correct.
It's, it's paid on participation. So, let's say I have 4,000 kids eat every day, I get paid for 4,000 meals. They have to be complete meals. Then we also subsidize our meal program with, like, all the heart snacks, adult meals, catering.
That's kind of where I'm thinking about it. Since we're going to lose this CARES money, maybe we can get rid of a few for old.
My, I have restricted fund, you can't take from food service to pay for dinner.
There you go. Much for that idea.
Sorry.
Turn to you.
I know, it's not that.
No, I'm joking, we're going to solve our mouth with your meat.
I have some, it's hot in here, so.
All right, can we make a motion? Can I make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the first revision for the budget.
Second it?
All right, we have a motion from Director Spear with a second from Director Donneler to approve the first revision for the 2023 budget as presented, including the first revision for the budget and the fiscal year '24 first revised budget document. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote, please go.
John Ward?
Again, with huge appreciation for the job done, yes.
Kevin Boiles?
Yes.
Michelle Bracken?
Yes.
BJ Donneler?
Yes.
Randy Hyman?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Marcy.
Thanks, Marcy.
Take the next week off and just tell Heidi, you know her.
She's taking out with Kelly.
Yeah. All right, next up, we have the approval of the first and final only reading the policy 104, School District Mission Statement, Dr. Hart.
Correct, so with the adoption of our new strategic plan and the mission statement and that strategic plan changes, so for those who are just curious of what the previous mission statement was in our existing policy 104, "Brainerd Public Schools in partnership with our community will ensure our students achieve their individual potential by providing the highest quality programs and resources to prepare them for the ever-changing global society," is now being replaced with "educate and inspire each student by providing innovative opportunities to create lifelong success." And this comes from the work of the strategic planning process that took place this last year. So now we can start to work around that. So, based on the adoption, we need to have it reflected in the poll.
I make a motion, we approve the new mission statement of Brainerd Public Schools.
Okay, we have a motion from Director Bracken with a second from Director Donneler. Discussion.
Dr. Hart, are we going to try to, uh, move that mission statement in our publications as they get updated? So the expense isn't as great as if we would just cart launch? So it's going to be a, it's going to be a moving target over a few months, though.
And you'll see a brief introduction to that this evening when we give an update. But yes, that's exactly where we're at.
Thank you.
Great question.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please Kelly.
Kevin Boiles?
Yes.
Michelle Bracken?
Yes.
BJ Donneler?
Yes.
Randy Hyman?
Yes.
Sarah Spear?
Yes.
John Ward?
Yes.
All right, motion carries, thank you. And then we'll bring up Ms. Ross for the approval of the revision of MSBA policy 506, Indian discipline, and the appendix 506.2.
Thank you, Chair Boiles. Just by way of introduction, an overview why this policy was revised. It was revised because of some legislative action last year, and it expanded greatly to 24 pages. Come on. It outlines all of the things that you would expect in this policy in great detail. And in order to make it more user-friendly, we have provided the appendix, which is a flowchart, if you will, outlining major infractions and minor infractions to the tenants of the policy, and how school administrators might act in accordance with our policy, along with classroom teachers and other providers of educators in our building who work directly with students. There is also some examples on the second page. There is also some examples on the second page of the appendix. It is not an exclusive list, but it gives some guidance and some suggestions about how things fit within the parameters that we now have in this policy.
A flowchart is fantastic.
Yeah, well, I'll say again, having the privilege to be second chair to Director Heidman on the Policy Committee, we spent a lot of time on this, not as much as you did. We get to come in and see all of your hard work, but it is the ability to, the way you were able to tweak that second page, not just the visual, but the, that second page to really encapsulate the important elements of what's in 25 pages of what our good friends in St. Paul saddled us with, is really outstanding work. It was kind of fun to watch it unfold actually during those couple of policy committees where we were tackling it, but I'll let Director Heidman speak for himself, but I'm very comfortable and confident with what we've put together here.
Only thing I wished we could do, Ms. Ross, is get teachers, get some of the teachers, some body cam, cameras, just to see what they have to put up with sometimes. You know, we can talk, without data privacy invasions or anything like that. I mean, it wouldn't be made public, but at least, you know, amazingly what they have to put up with.
Yeah, our teachers are pretty fabulous, and I think that's why they keep extending the invitation to see their programs and their classrooms in action because any given day, it's an opportunity to learn and grow a whole classroom, classroom full of individual learners that have all kinds of needs. I think I read somewhere once that the only person that makes more decisions in a day than a teacher is an air traffic controller. And sometimes it feels like an air traffic controller when you're in a classroom.
Yeah, I mean, the classrooms I've been in last year, the classrooms that had EAs, it was just the night and day difference between those that didn't have EAs. So this is, yeah, this flowchart is really, really great.
Do teachers have input on this?
Teachers will have input in the implementation. Right now, this is just the interpretation of the policy. Now the work begins and how we are going to enact the policy in, in classrooms and in different programs across the district. Our district leaders have seen it and provided input based on what they currently have in practice. So there's not a lot of surprises in here for teachers because there are things that are already being used, but they're site-based rather than district-wide. This will be the first time that we've had a district-wide flowchart that we can provide guidance and training and support for.
I've talked to quite a few teachers that are awfully frustrated with behavioral issues. And it seems to me that the common denominator is, maybe this isn't the place to talk about this, is it's just the support that they feel like they're getting from the processes. You know, kids can, I'm just making one example, throw scissors and tomorrow they're right back in your class and then they're going to try a new program, you know, or a day after. I just hope that you guys, you know, you guys know this, and I know the state has put this burden on us, but we just hope that, I just think the teachers need to be protected and the other kids that are there to learn. I brought up quite a few times these meanings, that if you're scared to death of the so-and-so over there in the corner, it's always after you, scared to learn anything, when you're petrified every day, and then you wonder why they can't go to school. I might think I was sick too if I thought I was going to, somebody was going to abuse me all day long. So just hoping there's enough teeth in this. About the Heidi vote today, she kind of, you know, assured me that it's there and that the teachers are going to get the training they need to protect themselves and the other kids. It's good. If it doesn't work, then I guess we'll have to readdress this and review the uppers.
Director Ross, can I just, when you look at the second part of the appendix, a lot of our elementary schools have spent a great deal of time at site levels. When you talk about teacher input, a lot of the definition of what's a minor, what's a major, looking at consistency, I feel like our elementary buildings, especially through their site leadership teams, some buildings more than others have really looked at, let's try to collectively define that, let's try to collectively respond to that. You know, that's not systematic throughout the system, and I think that's what they're trying to do through policy, is systematic throughout the system. So just when you asked about teacher input, is there response on?
Yeah, I just am curious if any teachers got put on the committee to help work on this, because I've heard from a lot.
Yes, the work is far from done. And I think, you know, at the board level, we've got to be prepared to support that, and I know we are. I think it's one of the things that I have in mind for our next retreat, now that the strategic planning, for the most part, with the exception of the Portrait of the Graduate stuff, now that that's behind us, I'd like to see us spend some more time on this, you know, less formal setting to be able to really kind of peel back some layer of the sun you know a little bit in terms of how we support those educators from the board on down. Because this is a slippery, it's difficult, right? Because part of it requires us to push back on people that are threatening to pull their kids out of school while we're fighting declining enrollment. So it's a little bit of a catch-22 in some cases, at least some of the instances that I've been involved in. So it's, it's, you know, I think there's a lot of healthy dialogue to be had about that.
May I make a motion?
Sure.
I was just going to make a motion to approve the, to look at what it asks you, to approve the revision of the MSBA Policy 506, New Discipline Policy.
Okay, we have a motion.
I'll second.
So we have a motion from Director Brecken with a second from Director Spear to approve revisions of MSBA Policy 506 and the Appendix 506.2 as presented. Any further discussion? Allow for the delay for Director Ward, I'm good. Okay, we'll do a roll call vote then, please.
Michelle Brecken?
Yes.
DJ Donilonier?
Yes.
Andy Heidman?
Yes.
Sarah Spear?
Yes.
John Ward?
Yes. Okay, motion carries. And our last action item of the evening would be the approval of the fourth and final reading of MSBA Policy 631, Library Materials.
So revisions, we met in Policy Committee, I can't recall back the date, but took input in the revisions that were suggested during the Policy Committee with both Director Heidman and Director Boiles. In your policy, they are highlighted in yellow to be reflective. The other ones that are in red, we did have Legal take one final review at this, and so any clarification language or maybe a misquote of a statutory number has been corrected by the attorney. So before you is the policy based upon those changes. No other feedback was given from the previous reading to this reading, with the exception of what was brought to the Policy Committee.
As a refresher, a couple of the main things that we altered at the last Policy Committee meeting, there are two primary ones. One was on Director Brecken's suggestion that we make a very clear definition of what the timelines look like as it relates to. What we didn't want to do was have a policy that tethered us to a very specific timeline of creating a committee and going through the whole process that would suffer from having three or four concurrent challenges at the same time. So we added language to the policy to say that that clock resets at the conclusion of a book challenge, then a new clock could start and the process starts all over again. So that was the first one. And then the second one was, we had a lot of discussion at the last board meeting around the language that was originally in 631 or at the last draft, related to an attestation that the challenger of the book would sign an attestation that they had read the book. We altered that language based on a wonderful suggestion, I think, from Director Murtha, and we changed that to, the expectation is that the individual has read the book. What I would say about that, just to editorialize on my own, would be, I don't think that's an unfair expectation when you're asking the administration to pull together a group of 12 to 14 people and have them read the book. If you've got a problem, the expectation is with the book, the expectation would be that you've read the book to evaluate it as a whole. We're not going to make you sign something that say you did, but if you didn't do it, I would submit that those people sitting on that committee are probably going to have a significant feeling about that since they're being forced to read it. So something to keep in mind for anybody out there that's, you know, thinking about potentially challenging resources, I think it's fair to go through the same process that you're asking 12 to 14 other people to go through. So we felt that that was a good compromise to get to a place where we weren't forcing people to sign something or whatever, but to still convey that it is our preference that people read something before they challenge it. Hope I said that all right. Does that make sense based on?
And there was a third one, Director Heidman.
Oh, sure. And then the other thing was we removed some redundancies that Director Heidman had called out where we were sort of duplicating the same descriptions in two different places in the policy.
This is not a huge suggestion, but should we be saying that the expectation is that the complainant has read, viewed, or listened to the book in its entirety?
What page is that?
I think it's because you have video.
Chair, did you listen to the audio, Agent?
Yeah.
There was language elsewhere in the policy that had that.
Yeah, there was.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I could get by on that.
There's listened to the policy earlier.
So we just wanted, okay. Because my vote tonight is, I think that's a great suggestion. I'd like to get buy-in from the board to add that because there ain't no fifth reading of this, or proven or not, you know, unless, unless we don't have votes tonight. So I would, I would be very much in favor of changing that to make it consistent with elsewhere in the policy where it's not just read but also listened to or good catch, Director Brecken. Does any board member have an objection to that? Okay, then that seems to work for me. That's great. So those, by way of clarification, are essentially what we did when we lifted the hood on this thing at Policy Committee last time back in January, I think.
And then again, just the red is clarification from Legal, it doesn't change any substance, substantial portion of the policy, it just brings clarity around a word or a language or statutory number that was identified in the policy.
I would like to make a motion...
Mr. Chair.
Oh, Director Ward, sure.
No, go ahead, go ahead with the motion.
I would just like to make a motion that we approved the Policy 631 with that small revision.
Thank you, Director Brecken.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion from Director Brecken with a second from Director Spear to approve fourth and final reading of MSBA Policy 631 as presented with one small edit to add language as previously discussed. Further discussion? Director Ward?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm not sure how I'm going to vote on this yet because of two reasons. I still like the original language of the complaint must attest to having read or reviewed the material in question in its entirety. I mean, the state statute even talks about that. So that, that to me is very, very important. And Director Boiles, Chair Boiles, you had mentioned that, you know, if we're pulling together a whole bunch of people to review a banning of a book where somebody has not read the book in its entirety, that's really concerning to me, video or book. So I just, I would like to see that original language in there. And then also, I can't find in the policy, I thought we changed this to, anybody in the community could bring something forward rather than a parent of a child that's in the school district. Can you help me with that?
Yeah, let's find where it's at. I know what you're talking about.
It's page five, paragraph, Roman numeral seven, paragraph B. Is the current language. Did you hear that, John?
Yes, I did. Thank you, DJ Heidman.
So school district, employee, student, or a parent, guardian, or resident of the school district is how it's worded now.
Yeah, I think it's imperative that we, I just think that the parent or the guardian of a student should, should be, should be in there rather than a resident of the school district. You know, to me, it's, it pertains to the students that are in the, in the school. I mean, so, you know, I'm in favor of, of getting this policy done and enacted, but those are the two concerns that I have, and I wanted to lay them out in this discussion.
Okay, thank you, Director Ward. Further discussion?
The same two concerns that we had in August. I guess, I mean, I'm tired of getting emails telling me to get off this deal and move on and get to work and get some things done that actually make a difference. If we want to drag this on for a few more months, I guess we can. Because we have to make a lot of adjustments to that thing, so I guess we have to send it back to the Policy Committee and if that's what you guys want to do.
No.
We're going to try not to.
Well, how are you going to make it? So we're going to make Michelle's change, we're going to make a couple of John's changes, you know, those were all in there and just got taken out.
Well, Michelle, Director Brecken's was, as we just all said, we're in favor of it, it's a semantic consistency change, right? We're not fundamentally changing anything about the spirit of the policy.
Well, talk about transparency. I don't know if I'm a taxpayer, it doesn't seem very transparent to me.
Here's an observation and Director Ward on, on your comments about who, who gets to bring in a complaint or a challenge. I, I do agree that when we decided to deviate away from having one policy that covers all curriculum, this is no longer curriculum that we're talking about. It's a free choice book and free choice book between a parent and a child to pick out. It's not necessarily the community now deciding on the curriculum for all students. It's a very different thing because we've taken, we've lifted that out and made it a different thing. And so I agree with you. I think we've, we've essentially taken that power away from the parents to say, you, you know, your child can go into the library and with your support, pick out a book or not pick out a book, and that's between you and your child. Now we've said the community can weigh in on, on that. And we're going to designate all kinds of time and energy and resources to having a delegated committee do that work. So I mean, I'm not in favor of that. I, I think we've made a really good compromise here and I will support this, but I think we've spent an inordinate amount of time on this issue, and I too have heard from people that are super frustrated. I myself am super frustrated that we've spent a lot of time on this because I, I do believe that it should be between, be between the parent, child, and the librarian when it comes to a free choice book.
Well, the way the policy is written is a principal and the librarian. If you have a problem with the book, and the way this latest copy is, it doesn't even say the principal could say, okay. It just says they have to give out the form so you can go to the next level. It doesn't even offer it as an option that you could, the principal could just, I mean, I wasn't going to bring it up since we're going to tear it back into the...
It's up under informal.
It is.
It's up under the informal.
Oh, it's a different section?
That process is the informal process, which never existed in any codified policy before, so now that's there. And then let's say that the principal goes through that process with a parent.
So you're talking about right here on...
Yeah, now you're talking about, I don't like what the principal did and I want to formally challenge the book.
So you're talking about the informal request for reconsideration? So let's read that quick, can I?
Yeah.
"Request for reconsideration of specific library material shall be directed to the building principal. The building principal and the library media specialist shall assume responsibility for processing the request on an informal basis." Great. "The building principal shall provide an explanation to the individual who submitted the request within 10 school days of inquiry. Explanation shall include the particular selection criteria, the material in question met in order to be included in the library as support or as independent reading choice for students in the building." So basically, it's like, we're just going to tell you why we bought the book, which of course, we all know is a little questionable because all those books that got called, that no one really realized, I mean, everybody admitted, Director Murtha did, that they can't go through all the books, so it was just a package of books and they didn't really know that book got in there. So I mean, it's just, it's, it's fine. You guys just, just do whatever you want, you know? And it's like, you got to go waste the time on this and get into the real stuff and figure out, get our students back and maybe work on some more important things. So whatever you guys want to do. I mean, I wasn't going to bring it out, but if we're going to nitpick the thing, then let's get nitpicking. People are afraid to go protest books. People are afraid to go raise problems with their kids. Some of them are in this room that I've talked to with little kids that don't want to upset the teacher because they don't want their kids singled out, they don't want the other kids to find out. There's a lot to it, but, you know, I think we should just get a vote on this baby and roll on down the highway.
Well, the motion as presented doesn't alter anything except the language we agreed to before the motion.
Mr. Chair.
Director Ward?
Thank you, and I agree with everything that's been said by other colleagues on the board, you know, that we need to come to fruition, we need to come to some kind of a conclusion with this. I've been, you know, I, in my opinion, I've been pretty vocal about feeling that the, that the person that's making the challenge... that the person that's making the challenge should have that, the whole thing, period. I've, I've never wavered from that. And the whole thing about Representative Spear, I, excuse me, Director Spear, I also agree and concur with you on the, between the parent and the child. So I've been pretty vocal on, on those things as well. But I know that there's been compromises made, and I appreciate that there's been compromises made because that's how it should happen. I'm just, still just concerned about it. So I'll call the question.
Director Ward?
Yes.
Question.
I called the question.
Called the question.
Yes. Well, we have to vote on the call of the question.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
Called the question.
No.
No, whoa, whoa.
No, it's not the available.
You did it. I didn't know what was going on.
That takes a two-thirds vote. Call the question. There's a, this is a vulnerable thing, Director Ward. Just because you called the question, that doesn't mean discussion ends.
It means we vote on ending discussion without further discussion, to your point.
And a two-thirds vote. I believe if you look at Robert's...
Well, question's been called. Can we do a roll call vote on calling the question?
Let's just vote. Let's just vote.
End discussion and vote on the question.
John, I said discussion.
Question's voted.
Roll call vote on calling the question on the motion.
TJ Donnelly.
Yes.
Eddie Hyman.
We are voting on...
On calling the question.
Yes.
Sarah Spear.
Yes.
John Ward.
Yes.
Kevin Wells.
Yes.
Michelle Brecken.
Yes.
Okay. So now the question's called. No further discussion. We have the motion on the table. Motion by Director Brecken, second by Director Spear to approve the fourth and final reading of policy 631 with the one minor language change. And this will be the final reading of that policy. Now we'll do a roll call vote on that.
TJ Donnelly.
No.
Greg Hyman.
No.
Sarah Spear.
Yes.
John Ward.
Pass.
Kevin Wells?
Yes.
Michelle Brecken?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes three to two with one abstention. Policy is adopted.
Well, I believe, Mr. Chair...
Oh, you want to come back around? I'm sorry. I thought you abstained, John. Go ahead.
No, I did not abstain. I passed.
Okay.
Am I correct on that, Mr. Chair?
I don't know. My Robert's Rules of Order was in my other pants.
That's your best one.
My understanding, my understanding, Mr. Chair, my understanding of Robert's Rules is a, as we come to a roll call vote, once you pass, then it comes back to you again, is my understanding.
Okay. Then it's back to you, Director Ward.
I could be wrong, but I recall that anyhow. So if it's coming back to me, Mr. Chair, is it coming back to me?
That's correct, Director Ward.
Okay. I'll vote yes.
Okay. Then amending my previous statements, the motion carries four to two. Thank you, Director Ward. All right. We will move on to committee meeting updates. Wow, here's a fun one. Director Hyman, want to update on the Policy Committee?
There really isn't much else to add except Dr. Han did share, we're going to be doing the Portrait of Graduate Advisory Session is going to be scheduled for February 15th.
That's this Thursday, correct?
Yep, this coming Thursday. And we'll be taking a look at what attributes we want of a bleeding graduate, what they should be possessing. That's going to make it easier for them to succeed in life and career. Let's see here. Once, Community Education, the winter-spring guide's been mailed out along with a lot of adult enrichment opportunities. There's a less play event, a collaboration between the center and ECFE instructors and other community organizations. And the goal there is to get our senior population and our young population working together, spending a Saturday in March, I believe, if I am reading this correctly from the minutes. And Anne Marie was on the radio sharing information about the Community Education Guide and the opportunities that are available. Other than that, I think that's it. Then this, Dr. Han, if you have anything to add to that?
Policy discussed or reviewed here. It's on the board table.
Great. Okay, great. Thank you, Director Hyman and Dr. Han. Next up, we'll do information. It was a Brainerd Public Schools Foundation update from Director Spear.
Couple of things I would share. First, a huge thank you to those that were able to make it to the big event. It was hugely successful out at Grandview this year. It looks like it will be there in next year provisionally. Mark your calendars for provisionally, provisionally, February 8th.
Twenty-five.
What's that?
It's 2025.
Of 2025. And then a couple of other deadlines. Deadline for scholarships for seniors, if you have seniors in your life, is February 28th. And for the 4A grant cycle for teachers with some special requests and, and programs is February 20th. Lots of good things happening.
And they anticipate a record reading year with the big event.
Yeah.
One of the largest, the largest.
Yes. Numbers are not finalized yet, so I didn't say them out loud if they were...
So more money for scholarships, more money for teachers and activities on that.
Okay. We'll move on to the Equity Force Task Force update. Director Brecken asked me to fill in for her because I was at the last one and she was unable to make it. Dr. Han, you were there as well, so between the two of us, we'll probably get this right. The main things that we covered in that meeting first was, we got a look at the high school graphic design and graphic arts classes produced a number of posters, prototypes that we were to vote on. These are posters for interruption tactics and things for bullying and other things like that from a student safety perspective. So we got to see the creative juices of our, of our, our graphic arts kids produce some really, really wonderful looking posters. There are about, I don't know, probably about 15 of them, I guess. So it was a really, really hard decision to have to vote for a couple of them, but vote we did. So there will be some of those, and those will be being produced now and being put up in the various facilities.
Training around.
Yeah. And then the other thing we did was we continued to work in small groups. There were categorical work that was going on as it relates to community engagement in different areas, as it relates to different constituent groups that we would like to craft some messaging around some of these things. So there's like a community segment, there's like a business segment, there was like a, and Dr. Han can speak to it better than I did. Some of the groups had completed basically their work, and then we were kind of condensing into other groups to finish and help other groups that hadn't quite gotten everything all ready to go so we can button that up and have it ready to go. Anything to add to that?
No, really looking and focusing on the community connection.
Yeah. And then the third thing that went on was, there was just a quick update that they did on the presentation that was done for the In-Service Day back on January 15th, which was right after this meeting. That's pretty much... Director Hyman?
I've got some concerns. And I don't want to, you know, I don't want to poo-poo anything that you guys are doing within the Equity Task Force. It almost seems like you guys are operating in a bubble, and you, you've got this gentleman designing some posters. Doesn't this have to come before the board? I mean, I mean, you, I mean, all community stuff comes before the board. Why is the task force, the Equity Task Force, it almost seems like you guys are, like I said, operating in a little bubble and everything is just... And I'm not saying what you're doing is not great, but don't you think we as a board have an opportunity to look at these posters to see what's...
Do you want to see the banners for homecoming?
This is a little different.
I, I really don't see the difference.
Okay, that's fine.
It's things that we put up in the hallways. I mean, there are three board members on the Equity Task Force that are part of the process as well.
Because John's on there now, too?
Correct.
Is it? Are they open meetings like all the other committees?
They are not open meetings. They are not.
They're not open.
Because there's student representation in the meetings, we need to protect that.
I mean, it's a fair concern, but to me, you're talking about a poster that's going up that says, "If you see something, say something." So if we have, you know, that's really all it is, is just...
I get it. I understand. But doesn't, doesn't this need, I mean, there are statutes about banners and free speech, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, last year at the MBA convention, MSBA convention, they had a breakout on this, and I think they had it this year again as well about approving things. So I, I just have a concern that you, the Equity Task Force is kind of operating kind of on its own, and, and nothing, nothing gets approved or nothing gets brought to the board. In fact, I would like to have the name changed. I'd like to see it called a task or an Equity Committee. And operates as a committee.
Well, the purpose of the group is to not exist in the relative near term to midterm, right?
Oh, really?
The idea is, the idea is that it's going to conclude its, its mission, which was to bridge a gap between some social issues that were going on and to try to find a way to translate into something that we could...
This is a government entity, you know? Things don't easily cool once they get started at this level. It's easy.
And that's fine. I was, I just had a concern that all of a sudden, things are being made...
No, anything that would be, like if we were telling staff to do something specific, then there would be a recommendation around that. But it dovetails with in-service stuff that's already part of the normal course of what they go through that's within teaching and learning or, or staff development, I should say.
I think if it affects policy, that's something different. I mean, that's how, that's how we govern.
Well, banners could affect policy.
But I think, you know, everybody that makes banners is looking at policy to make sure it's been that.
Okay.
I would hope.
Yeah. I mean, keep in mind, we also have student groups, student-led groups that do different things for various, I mean, there's, there's literally dozens of them. And at any point, they're putting up signage or whatever, or maybe they're putting up signage for Ms. Johnson's play that's coming up, right? That doesn't come before the board. I mean, it's, I guess I don't see them as, as really intrinsically different from each other. It's informative.
Only because this is a task force that's, you know...
Can I provide clarification? So this is a question specific to the posters. If you look at our bullying policy, there's certain things we're looking at as how do you interrupt bullying? So we had a presentation over a year ago at the request of both students and staff of, when I'm struggling with this, what is some language I can use? What are some things I can do in trying to do that consistently? So really, the, they're called interrupter posters. Are a reflection of what's existing in current policy that's already been adopted. It's really looking at elevating student voice. And why was it a student group that they, they chose to come to the task force is they knew that this was work that they were trying to do. We, if you look at the last report that came to the full board, it was about student safety. So Erin Carlgaard, who's been leading and actually just is in the middle of a dissertation, doing lots of student interviews and student voice, actually presented that at your board retreat. And so that is a reflection of the work that's coming. So I don't see anything that's unusual about it or out of the ordinary. As a matter of fact, I think it's a quick visual that gives both staff and students the language that can be used. The creativity came from students giving us the language and the ideas.
There was a question. You know, I'm sure you guys, I mean, the task force is doing wonderful things.
But the, the task force, if you look at that framework that was presented with all the working buckets, the last piece of that is community because the rest of it is really looking at all embedding into curriculum and policy, which there's the DAC that does all the curriculum pieces, as a school project, really governing the policy. So the last facet, framework, that's really taking some intentional work to, to bring a collective group from the community and students together is that community connection piece. And that's the last facet they're working on. So the anticipation is that that task force is going to be ending this year because all of the work is embedded in the current work agreement. That's been approved and governed through policy.
That's wonderful clarification.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right. Marcy's still awake back there. We'll, we'll have her come up and do the business services report.
Just barely. Senior board agenda is the financial report. The only thing to note is, per usual, the community, or, excuse me, some of these differences will be addressed with the budget revision. So you'll notice that this still has the original budget. The revision will be presented in the January, February report. So it'll be two months delayed, if that makes sense. And then Dr. Han stole my thunder. I was going to bring up the MD fiscal review, and I just wanted to point out that that is all transactions, so payroll transactions and accounts payable. And we do have three staff in the payroll department as well. And thank you to everyone because, yes, we can sometimes be a little nitpicky, and I'm sure it's rather annoying, but in order to follow those guidelines, that's what we have to do. And then in your packet is the enrollment report. And since the beginning of the year, we're down 53 students. The five-year average is 70, so we are doing, we're tracking better than we have in the past. So that's good. And then you can see that I added the revised budget column, so you can see what those numbers look like in comparison to our pupil count. Any questions?
Thanks, Marcy.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Marcy.
Superintendent Ward.
Yes. Because I want to make sure to stay here long time.
What's under?
Yeah, you wait. I'll give you some thunder. Just to have control. So I think you have that, that you're, let's dim the lights. We did not. That's the lightning and thunder that we're referencing. So to Director Hyman's point, what are we doing with our new mission? Statement for the district, my goal as a superintendent is any report that you receive from me is going to tie directly back to our mission and to the strategic plan that's been adopted by the school board. So, very simple. I don't think anybody can quote our old mission, but even in practice with our first, we practiced with the foundation, educate and inspire. Education is all academics and the things that we do for the achievement of our students, but we know that that's going to be propelled to success when we inspire our students. So all the things beyond is the academic subjects. So when you think about this, we are teaching children, not subjects, and we're leading people, not projects. We will work alongside those we serve with a commitment to educate and inspire each student but by providing innovative opportunities to create lifelong success. Your strategic plan goals. You heard a report tonight specific to academic achievement. We've adopted VASBRIDGE where you will hear benchmarking data from fall, winter, and spring, and we'll be able to overlay that as those years come. As we move forward, in presentations to the school board, we'll make sure that they're aligning with one of those four goals. Again, we have safe facilities. We have the strengthening of the financial position of the district and the safety and well-being of our students and staff. Trying to give highlights. So educate. I could click on this, and I'm not sure if the sound will work, but making learning fun. I was sent an example. You can think Erin Carlgaard. We had a young student who got excited to understand fractions. You talk a lot about percentages and fractions, Director Donlinger. Here's a fun example from one class, if it plays. Nope. Now I need to access.
I know you like me.
I do, but it was working before, so we'll go back to that one. Anyways, they wrapped to fractions. So one student, when he finally got the idea of what it was, he created a whole long rap. The class stood a backbeat to him, and the whole class participated. February is our love-to-read month, so I think about giving lots of opportunities to read. We're searching for guest readers. You've probably had lots of invitations to see that. Some exciting things happening at Forestview. When you look at how we're instructing math rather than just doing remote and memorization, we actually are creating thinking classrooms. So they're in groups, and they're doing problem solving and applications. So if you'd like to see some new approaches to math, and that's how it's being handled, I highly encourage you to go to Forestview Middle School. Inspiring students. So robotics, when you think about technology and innovation. So Friday night, the robotics team was still late at Brainerd High School, working as they prepare for their competition this Saturday. They're going to be hosting 23 teams over at Riverside. So if you want to see some innovation in action, that's a great place to come see it. This past weekend, our early childhood program, as well as the high school FFA, hosted the Sweethearts Dance. Why do I bring these things up? One, I was at the high school Friday night, and I saw amazing things happening between students supporting students. We had a student that fell ill, and one of our students, I'll give a special shout out to Ellie Hoffman. Ellie Hoffman raced alongside and just really nurtured that student, took care of that student. Early childhood, we got to see our young families and parents and guardians and their kiddos just be in the school experience and have a special evening together. Activities that are happening, our Nordic skiers, both boys and girls swept the Section Eight championships. They're moving on to state. Our girls Alpine team is also headed to state this weekend. And our Kicksters talk about a legacy that's well-known throughout the state. the state, they're heading off to state, and we have a send-off for them this coming Thursday. So lots happening in education, but a lot happening in inspiration as well, to make great things happen for our kiddos. And then that's your one pager, just to continue to remind, that these are the things we're going to continue to focus on, and our core values, and where we're headed with outcomes. So any update that you hear moving forward will always be tied directly to our mission and the goals we've set forward as a board. Any chance I can play the rap yet? Oh, if I didn't have to pull up my email publicly, can you get rid of the screen? All right, it's really, really good, I'll send it to you, but it would be really fun for the, it's pretty fun to hear a kiddo rap to fractions.
Well, think of it, think of it when we grow up. Babies, I mean, all those two people.
Schoolhouse rock.
Yeah, and all that stuff, you were all, we all knew all those deals in our heads.
Right, but this little kiddo, and then you put the technology about backbeat and the whole class participating, so you're all going to get an email, but I really appreciated the class sending it.
Did anybody see the eleven-year-old little guy that was interviewing Patrick Mahomes and stuff, something? He, he won something, he's been working on it, he can't play sports, so he started practicing when he was eight, he's eleven years old, and I'll tell you what, this kid, he's going to be acting pretty soon, I don't know, he was eleven years old, he was like a troll, he was three of them, yeah, this was little, little guy, it was pretty cool.
So that's my update.
Good job.
Thank you.
That's when you had it.
Thank you.
Well, let's move along to director updates, Director Brecken?
Okay, I just have a little thing I want to say, just really kind of piggyback some on, bless you, Dr. Hahn, talked about, my family, my needed family, had five children who attended Brainerd Public Schools, and each of them were involved in a variety of extracurricular activities that taught them leadership skills, teamwork, commitment, and gave them a sense of community. Sitting in this chair, I am constantly reminded of the extracurricular activities that Brainerd Public Schools offers to our students, so I want to give a shout-out to all of our coaches, advisors, volunteers, and the countless number of people who work behind the scenes that dedicate their time and energy in ensuring our students have opportunities outside of the classroom that build confidence and character.
Nice. Thank you, Director Ward. Director Hyman?
Before I came to the meeting tonight, I caught on TV, obviously, there's a new legislative session going on, and one of the discussions on the first day was SRO discussion, and what they're going to try to push for is they're going to try to push for SROs not being a district employee, they want to be buying in more detailed holds that can be used by teachers and SROs, and they're going to push for a lot of additional training in this area, so they're, they're talking about it already, it's the first day, so we may see some, some new things regarding SROs. That's it.
Thank you very much, Director Donlenger.
I don't have much to say, but if anyone's got, you know, relatives, neighbors, any of these little kids that are missing school, you can help them out, give them a ride to school, help, help those folks that are having a tough time, and maybe sit down with the kid, you know, work with them a little bit, because those middle school numbers are a little concerning, and I don't know how those kids ever catch up, and it's sad, because if you get too far behind, we all know what the results are, they're not very promising, and so I'm going to snoop around the neighborhood myself, see if they'll see, if they want to ride their bikes, you know, hey, back to school.
Sure, and C-Officer, Donlenger?
True, it's the officer.
That's our county commissioners.
Yeah. Actually, you'd probably, if you, you have access to large vehicles, you could do dog catching at the same time.
Grab a school bus in the morning and dog catching in the afternoon.
Thank you. Director Ward? You're muted.
He's muted.
Thank you for letting me know that, thank you, Mr. Chair, and actually, Director Donlenger can help with, as he suggested, with attendance, and I think that when we offer incentives to people, they respond real positively, so if a high school graduate has perfect attendance, maybe they could get a free Chevrolet, I don't know.
See the USA in your Chevrolet, Director Ward.
So the other thing about, about raising money is if my piece of cake or pie or whatever is still there, I think we should have an auction on that, not just give it to somebody, so that'll save that, put that piece in the freezer for me, will you? So also, congratulations, congratulations on the big event, I heard, obviously I wasn't there, but I heard it was a huge success, and so for all those involved, congratulations, and two more things, I wanted, I wanted to bring up, and I've talked to some of you about this already, I want to look at the possibility of having a student rep on the school board, and if we have our April retreat, I want that on the, on the retreat agenda, I, I really want to look at that possibility, a third of the school districts in the state of Minnesota have a student rep on their school board, and they prove very valuable, so I'm going to propose that, and I'm going to, I would like to have a discussion about it and, and put our heads together about it. The last thing I will say is, you know, we've had some tough times in this district lately with some deaths, some terrible deaths, and, and just lots of sad things, just tough, tough, tough things, and when I look at how this community has rallied behind those that are hurting, how our school family has rallied behind those that are hurting, and supported them, and loved them, and prayed for them, and cared for them, it gives me wonderful, a wonderful feeling, so God bless you all, and thank you for helping those that are, you know, seriously hurting, and I just wanted to make that comment.
Thank you, Director Ward. Director Spear?
I don't have anything tonight, thank you.
It's down to just little old me. Mr. Freeman, I'm sure had, you know, going home early was the better part of Valerie, probably took off already, but I just want to say that these have a smell, you can smell them. It's a good smell, I've been sitting here for two and a half hours. So, I, the April retreat, I want a no sweet, examine a policy on no sweets before the board until we get, yup.
Do you have a date on the April retreat?
No, we haven't talked about that, we'll throw calendars around on that, that's really all I have as well, so, that was just great to have those kids in here, that ProStar stuff is really cool. All right, and you can see the future meetings for yourself, tonight's meeting is on here, we have Portrait of Graduate Advisory Meeting at 4:30 on the 15th, DAC Meeting on the 20th, 21st Curriculum and Instruction to Staff Development Meeting, 27th is a, is a tentative special school board meeting, Lord willing, that will stay on the calendar, then we just have Student Support Services and Activities Committee Meeting on the 28th, there is no school board meeting in March as of right now, March 19th Equity Task Force Meeting, there's also an Equity Task Force Meeting tomorrow, it's not on here, and then we have Long Range Planning Committee on March 27th, and the Finance Committee, your next meeting is on April 2nd, and that is, I believe, everything.
Got it. Ward? You there?
Yes.
Are you getting your bag for that April?
Yes.
Okay, I'm just curious.
No, go get them. You're the vice chair, you're the vice chair, go get them.
I know, I just wanted to know if I have to go home, Lord, no, you're not going to. Okay.
All right, we entertain a motion for adjournment.
So.
Make motion.
So we have a motion from Director Hyman with a second, or Director Donlenger to adjourn, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, I nailed all of those tonight, didn't get much else, but we did.
Did a roll call to quit?
Anything because of, yeah.
Randy Hyman?
Yeah.
Yes.
John Ward?
Yes.
Kevin Wood?
Yes.
Michelle Brecken? Yes.
DJ Donnelly?
Yup, yes.
Okay, motion carries, we are adjourned.